Good evening, Dennis. I believe we are still waiting for Sky- oh, Skylar's joining right now.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Rebecca, I just got your email. I got a few other emails that I haven't been able to read yet even.
Okay, well, I included the, one of the resolutions from the Wolsey Fire Planning Verification Extensions, which the language I believe you're requesting. It is a different topic, sort of. I mean, it sort of is and isn't.
Yeah, I didn't even read what you included yet, but I'm sure that's right. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see, where did I go? There I am.
And Dennis is, I'm sorry, Dennis, Jeff Jennings is out of the country this evening and not expected to be able to join.
Oh dear.
And Skylar got a new haircut.
Yes, he did.
Let's hope Jeff is having fun.
He is. Okay, I think we're ready. Six thirty-one on this beautiful Tuesday evening. So, good evening, friends and neighbors. I would like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting is being held in teleconference due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu-city.org/virtual-meeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by Chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click on the raise hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is opened. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute from each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. And Alex has got the slide. He's a good man. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Peak? Thank you. Vice Chair Mazza?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Wonderful.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with item five B continued to. And Richard needs to help me on this. Is it March sixth or some other day?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, but March sixth is our first meeting, correct?
It, that would be the next available meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so it's March sixth. That's my motion.
And do I have a second?
You had a silent one for me, yeah.
Thank you. Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Wonderful. And ceremonial presentations, we don't have any, but at some point, hopefully, we will when we get back in that glorious building. Written in all communications from the public, communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda, but for which the Planning Commission has subject matter jurisdiction. The Commission may not act on these matters except to refer matters to staff or schedule the matters for a future agenda. Commissioners.
There were no members of the public who signed up in advance of the meeting to speak. If there is anyone present in the meeting this evening that would like to speak on something not currently on the agenda, but under the Planning Commission's purview, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. And seeing none?
Nope, nobody wants to play. Okay. Planning Commission and staff comments and inquiries. I believe Mr. Hill has a new colored hand up there in front of his screen.
Do I?
No, that's me. Never mind.
Oh. I'll put my hand up. I've got plenty to say.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, in no particular order. At the last meeting, I asked several questions of staff and got zero response. And, you know, I understand that we can't make a formal request of anything without three votes and but I'd hope in the future that if there's a question that doesn't have an answer, then at least I'll get a words to that effect rather than just being ignored. I did get through to Richard today and talked about some of those things there, so I got my answers mainly. One of them had to do with whether and when we get a tour of the college and the sheriff's station, and apparently that might be in the works. Another one is that I mentioned is that I think that staff reports should be labeled as drafts. I'm sorry, not the reports. The resolutions should be labeled as drafts so that when people read it, they don't just think it's a done deal and they understand, oh, this is just the draft that the council, the commission is working with. Also, I did finally get through the whole workshop on neighborhood scale adaptation planning for sea level rise. If anybody wants to talk about that, I have plenty of thoughts, but I'll do that offline. I drove by the college at night and noticed that it's totally not dark sky compliant. It looks like a pinball machine lit up. And I talked to Richard about it. He had some good explanations for why that would be, and maybe we can do something about it. And, you know, even if legally we don't have an option, I would hope that the college would see it as doing the right thing to fix it and make it compliant, just to set a good example for no other good reason than that. As a quick reminder, and I'm sorry, Jeff Jennings is not here, but there's always this discussion about are the vision and mission statements in the code or not, or are they just aspirational and just it, they are actually from the general plan, but they are embedded in the municipal code, chapter seventeen point oh-two in the basic definitions. They're repeated verbatim, so they are part of the code. Finally, no, not finally, but a minor thing, on the city calendar, the Planning Commission items never show up on the calendar unless you click on view more. And, you know, you're actively searching for it. Otherwise, what you see on our dates is typically knitting, chair yoga, and stretching are the three big items in the city on that day. And the Planning Commission, unless you're looking for it, you don't see it. It seems like like the city council, we should be on the top of the list on the calendar, so that seems like that could be easily fixed. And might explain why we don't get covered in the newspaper anymore because they don't see us on the calendar. Finally, the COVID declaration, there's several declarations, the local, the county, the state, federal, et cetera. They basically run out this month with one exception. The state emergency declaration runs out on the twenty-eighth, a week from today. The eighteen-month moratorium on permit expirations applied to permits through the end of two thousand and twenty-one. And so that eighteen months will expire this coming June. So and some of these are going to be applicable to the extensions that we're very likely going to be pulling here in a moment. But more, more generally, council, if you're listening, I would hope that we can figure out as a matter of law. I don't think we can just do it as policy, but how did to, looking forward, when the COVID expirations are no longer the COVID excuses, let's say, are no longer statutorily available, that we figure out a way to give the Wolsey burnout victims some slack on those and say, yep, we know you experienced supply chain shortages and you've had trouble with your insurance payout and all that kind of stuff, and to be able to somehow extend that for them, whether we refer to it as COVID or supply chain, or whether we just say we need to extend Wolsey a little bit again to distinguish those people from the developers who might be coming in and unless we are very clear that these COVID exceptions are expiring, we're going to get developers for the next few years coming in and wringing their hands and saying the word COVID and hoping we'll give them something. So hopefully, there's a way to distinguish between those two groups of people that it's not a violation of due process. So those are my general comments. Thanks.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yeah, I, one thing Craig said, which I question is why wouldn't we have control over the college? We had control over the high school. And dark skies covers the whole city. We gave the CDP for the college. We approved the variances for the college. And I saw nothing in there that exempted them from dark skies. I'd like Richard to comment a little bit on compliance because we're about two years late on compliance and everything. Especially the gas stations, which we gave special rules to, as they complained they were too tough. And now we're we're in the same boat again. They don't want to do it. So that's one question. Comment is the general plan is chapter one in the MMC verbatim. It is part of the MMC. It doesn't need to be in chapter seventeen, although it is. But it is chapter one, adopted by the city council. I think we need to have a date certain if we extend anything on COVID exemptions. A lot of the reasons for not getting completed are way past. Lumber's down fifty percent in the last six months. A lot of other construction materials are. We're going into a slow construction period. We've had five years. Now, we had one project that lasted sixteen years because we didn't have a ending point. Our LIP says five years. So we need to be careful not to just open this up forever. These lots will flip back and forth and back and forth and back and forth. So I'm not trying to be hard ass on on burned-out residents building their buildings, but at a certain point, Craig's right, you have to limit it to the people who had the damage rather than the people who are taking advantage of the flipping and actually have real excuses. Otherwise, the whole reason for the five-year maximum goes away. And that was a big deal at the time. I think Skylar was on city council at the time. So we need to look at that. We also need to realize that it is part of our LIP. It's not a municipal code. So we have to amend the LIP. Usually takes a year to a year and a half. So do you want to have a donut hole in the middle of it? So that's just something we ought to consider if this comes up. That's it.
Commissioner Peak?
I guess kind of maybe going on both a little bit of what Craig and John brought up would just be the comment, I don't know if there's a way to sort of factor in, you know, I mean, here we have a bunch of people that have dealt with the fire, then they had to deal with COVID and all the things, I think we're kind of all in the same page that if there's a way to figure that out so that we don't have to see each one of these every single time. Maybe we just bring back an item and discuss what we would make a reclamation to the council and sort of some sort of a timeline, you know? Or what the best way is to go about addressing that, but that may be better for, you know, staff time in the calendar just in dealing with all of this. And other than that, all good. Thank you.
Let's see, yes, the college needs to make sure they shut their lights off, just like everybody else. I'm way on board with both our other three of, I'm sure commissioners on this one. They need, they need to play by our rules. It's very important. That's a very important thing though, a lot of us here, so, or most of us here. Let's see, Commissioner Hill said something about the paper maybe getting a little more, I, I, here's how I look at us, Commissioner Hill. I look at us as triple A. Commissioner Peak was in the majors, and when you're up, up there on the big seats, we all, though, we sit in those same seats. That's the major leagues, and as important as I'd like to think we are at certain times. We're like triple A. So if they pass by us, then they pass by us. It's, a lot of people watch us, whether we see the names on the screen as we do now, or they've all figured out a way to come in another direction. We have a lot of people that watch us, so I think, I think we're okay.
When you said triple A, at first I thought you meant we're the guys you call in an emergency. And then I realized you're talking about ball.
I'm talking about baseball, of course.
But, you know, they, they do report on the public works and public safety, so, you know. What are you going to say?
I, that's it. I guess I, I guess I did, but that, that's that. Also, Dan Walters wrote a terrific article on the housing. And as we all know, that situation in Huntington Beach arose or, and, and it kind of got ugly with, with Bonta. And I'm, I'm just here to tell everybody when, if, if the ADUs are our saving grace and these people are coming. And they're coming for us, and they're coming for anybody that looks like us out there. So we need to make sure that we get get ourselves together on this because they'll make a decision we don't like. They'll make a decision like they did for the LCP, and then all you folks have to go back and try and fight for whatever we could get out of that deal. And they're coming. And I've watched it happen in my, in my career, and it was ugly. It was just god awful. So that's all I got. I guess I can go with you real quick, Vice Chair Mazza?
Well, I just want to disagree with you on that. We have a letter from the Coastal Commission saying we are not under that jurisdiction. We also have the fact that the Coastal Commission may not amend our LCP without our permission, as we've been told in today's KBOO news that we don't have to approve Norm's Hotel the way they want it. We can say no. We asked the city council to give us information on how much water is available, fire safety, parking, evacuation, all kinds of things. They refused to give us that information. We need it. And, and we have to realize that there's about four thousand lots in Malibu. Every single one, which is eligible. Okay, so this is a big deal. It is a possible doubling of residents. Not all of which are real residents because we have no policing of short-term rentals. We have the head of the co-founder of Airbnb starting a ADU, AUD company to truck in AUDs for rentals. So we can't be cavalier about this and say, oh gee, the Coastal Commission wants us to do this. It has to be right for Malibu. It has to be right for Malibu schools, has to be right for police enforcement, it has to be right for our budget. And it has to be regulated. And we have to come up with a way to enforce our rules, since these are going to be up in canyons hidden behind houses, a lot of them. This is the biggest thing that is going to happen in Malibu in the next ten years. So I don't want to be cavalier and say, oh gee, the Coastal Commission's going to make us do it, so let's just approve everything.
And, and, and that's, and I appreciate the robust conversation here tonight. I believe we are kind of getting a bit off topic in terms of discussing a very specific item, not on the agenda, the commission and staff comments and inquiries, more factual-based issues going on in the city. Don't want to veer too much into the, into the policy position realm during this time.
I do want to remind you, this is an ordinance, not a permit.
Then for, got it. Director Malika?
Chair, just to circle back on a couple of those, with the college, the the way that works is that since that's a school project, much like the, the high school, the state architect's office and the state issues all the permits and the building permits and also inspects construction. So Commissioner Mazza is correct in that we have a planning sphere of influence. We issue a CDP on it. But however, once construction starts, it's not like when you work on a house or a commercial building in the sense that our building official oversees the, the project. So in the case of the, the college, they obtain their coastal development permit, and they are required to obtain a final inspection for condition compliance. The issue right now is that a city staff has not been on that site to conduct an inspection. I highly doubt that the state inspectors that were there are aware of our dark skies ordinance, and I'm certain that's probably why the lighting that's there was put in. However, we will be following up with them on a number of compliance issues. We've already provided them with a copy of the conditions from both the Planning Commission and the City Council resolution to make them aware of what we're going to be looking for. And one of those items, of course, it, it has to do with their lighting and what they're doing out there, because yes, it's, you can see it very well. I'll leave it at that. And on some of the other items mentioned, the newspaper is, is very aware of these meetings. They are where the, where we publish essentially a copy of all our notices, so I'm not sure why we're not getting the coverage, but they, they are, they are in the loop. And then the question about putting draft on the resolutions, that is something we can bring up with the city clerk's office. However, it's really a matter of what the city council does. In an effort to make things as uniform as possible, we do our best to mimic the formatting of the city council. And so if we were to start putting draft on our resolutions, we would need to see that the city council is doing the same thing from talking to the, the the city clerk's office. And, you know, the answer I got back, by the way, when I looked into that one a while back actually, was that our resolutions that are published are unsigned, and therefore they're a draft because there's no signature on them. But it's something I can re-approach again, but as I mentioned, it, it has to do with a lot of what we do here. We, we do our best to mimic what the council does so that the public doesn't see various formats. The city tries to just have one presentation style.
That makes sense. I'll make a public comment to council about it because, you know, too many people look at that and go, wait a minute, it's a done deal.
Yeah, understand. Yes, some cities, I'm sure Pat doesn't want us to go here, but some cities actually don't even publish a resolution. They, they just publish an agenda report. And they then have the hearing, and then the staff comes back later with the resolution memorializing the findings and the discussion that took place that, that evening. We've been the opposite. We, we've come forward with a draft resolution for your consideration.
Quick question, Richard. Is there any follow-up on the tower at the college?
Yes. So they have submitted the required conditional use permit for the the wire, I, I hate to call it a wireless facility because it, it's the county. It's, at this point, we have not received an application from a cellphone carrier. We've only received an application from the county. It would be the sheriff, fire, it'd be emergency communications, is my understanding. They did make that application. We sent them back a incomplete letter, and I believe, and I'll double-check this, but it should be on our wireless web, or SMC Tower update page. But we made them aware that they need to address the issues of height and also the lighting and as well as the color. And, you know, just to, I, I don't want to get into it too much here because it's not an agendaized item, but essentially what we've given them the opportunity was to comply, you know? In other words, lower the tower, repaint the tower, you know, then that resolves the issue. Or come back and seek amendments from the Planning Commission to the CUP in an attempt to approve what's out there. So we've given them essentially those two routes, and last I had heard, they were looking towards, not so much on the color, it's still an issue we're going to have to work out, but at least on the height, they were looking at lowering it. I don't know if that's going to be feasible, but we have raised those, and that is not something we're about to sign off on until, one, you guys see the CUP, and then we address the issue of making it, you know, match up with what the Planning Commission put in the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Consent calendar. Previously discussed items, we don't have any, and new items. So we have B one. Extension of coastal development permit number fourteen dash zero nine seven nine, variance number fourteen dash zero five eight. Site plan review numbers fourteen dash zero five six, minor modification number fourteen dash zero one seven. And lot merger number fourteen dash zero zero one. Request to extend the Planning Commission's approval to combine two adjacent lots into one and to construct a new single family residence and associated developer. Um, oh, Re- Rebecca, go ahead, sorry.
Um, I was just going to ask if any of the commissioners were requesting to pull that specific item.
Yeah, I've got a hand up here. Um. I I would. I have issues with several of the items. I think with all of the items, if they're going to pass. I mentioned this in my comment before. I'll try to elaborate on it now. As I've I've talked to both Richard and Patrick about this and a little bit with Rebecca now. Um. We have been, and in the past, we we have incorporated in the resolutions.
Commissioner.
Hang on, yeah, go ahead, Chair Smith.
Well, I just gonna say about our expertise, anybody have any conversations with anybody?
Oh, hang on, hang on. I I say, and 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 Commissioner Hill, so if you'd like to pull any of these items, that is your prerogative. So I think before we start any any discussion, it's totally up to you if you want to pull one, two, three, or I believe there's four.
Okay, so my motion is to pull all four. Um, and and they they have a common thing thing, one solution for all four of them. They possibly have other issues too, but.
You got. Well, and and you always, because there are four different items, so Chair Smith, each item ha- has been pulled. It is my recommendation that you kind of take one at a time, notwithstanding the fact that 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 Commissioner Hill's concerns may apply across the board, just for the for the sake of clarity. Um, and of course, you know, the the public, we want to be clear on which one we are we we are dealing with. So what I heard from Commissioner Hill is that all four have been pulled.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay.
And so now now we are on three B one. Please, apologies for the interrupt interruption, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, okay, so. We, in the past, on some extensions, uh, i- in a slightly different context, but where there were COVID rationales providing the due cause for the extensions. We said, look, let's keep this clean and without making people jump through a bunch of hoops to explain why their COVID hung them up and what what are all the particulars of that, should just be able to cite directly to the county and the state declarations, the statutory declarations. And so we, in the recitals of those resolutions, we incorporated the references to Governor Newsom's State of Emergency Declaration, County, et cetera, and I uh Rebecca was quick and and graceful and kind to pull up the language that we used in the past. So we have that standing by if we want to put it in now. My thought is, these official exceptions are expiring. Some have expired expired already. Some Gavin Newsom's is expiring the end of this month, so a week from now. And um AB fifteen sixteen that created the eighteen month moratorium on the expiration of the building permit of of the the planning permits. That, the last ones that'll enjoy that extension will be through June of this year. So the thought is, if we can just put these in on the ones that are um making the excuse now, that makes a clear line. So, you know, a year or two from now, and we get developers coming in and saying COVID, COVID. We can not only say, look, that was long ago. We can say, look, these things all expired. And the permits that we approved before all enjoyed reference to those statutory authorities. Is am I not making sense to anybody? Whether you'd agree with me or not, are you understanding where I'm going with that?
I'm just trying to figure out, as I'm looking at this, Director Malika, is this their first ask of an extension?
Well, and and with specifically on this.
On Trevor Hill, hang on, I asked Director Malika a question.
You're you're muted.
Sorry, I'm trying to hit I change screens. I'm bringing up that particular one.
I mean, I don't see anything that says a one year extension, which would tell us that they've already had one two year maybe.
I don't want to give you the wrong.
Well, there's a five year maximum, so you can go off of that.
Just uh.
So.
You only get one, one COVID extension.
So they did. So it was adopted twenty twenty. They submitted an extension. Uh, so the the previous, this Pat, if if you could step here and make sure I don't misspeak. This would be their first extension by the city. The previous extension was the the automatic, uh, the COVID extension, which was not uh it is Pat's right word to use discretionary here.
No, exactly. Yeah, that was that was AB fifteen fifteen sixty one. Basically, what it did is gave all housing entitlements as defined by the state statute, eighteen months. And the these are kind of the key two provisions issued and in effect prior to March four, twenty twenty, and then set to expire prior to December thirty first, twenty twenty one. So if you're in that window, issued in effect prior to March fourth, twenty twenty, set to expire prior to December thirty first, twenty twenty one. AB fifteen sixty one gave you gave that that entitlement uh in additional eighteen months.
And Pat, it's been our practice, I don't know if you want to opine on this one, under Trevor, uh, when we first hearing this, we did not count any of those extensions towards the the council policy. So we essentially had been pausing the council policy. And and then, you know, not subtracting any opportunities. So this would technically be this person's first opportunity, uh, first extension to be heard by this uh by the city.
Correct. Now, 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 once again, that being said, that that is up to the discretion of the of the Planning Commission, though, whether or not that was, that is, you know, sound policy.
Question.
So my my point on this is that 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 um the resolution now, the draft resolution says refers to the approvals set forth in the prior resolution, and no other changes to the conditions contained in the prior resolution are made, and all the findings are the same. That's not quite true because we have this COVID rationale. So just to say, let's put the COVID rationale in and be clear that this is, when we're looking back from the future at what we've approved, we can clearly see, oh, yeah, this was a COVID case.
But it's it's the first time here before us. I mean, I.
It's automatic.
Fourteen years, fourteen years, I've never seen anybody turn down the first extension. I mean, come on, you guys.
We're not turning it down. What are you asking us to make it clear?
Well, there's nothing to talk about. It's a, it's a, it's an almost an automatic with a two year extension. If you want.
Yes, yes, yeah.
You weren't around when we dealt with a sixteen year old project for share. Because nobody bothered.
Commissioner Smith, my point is, yes, I'm not arguing that it shouldn't be extended. I'm just saying you have to make the due cause argument. In this case, the due cause argument is COVID. So instead of making them go through some elaborate thing about why it's COVID and why that slowed them down or whatever, you just put in the boilerplate resolution COVID declaration, and you're done. And then we know in the future, we look back, oh, yeah, that was a COVID case. That was their due cause. Uh, wha- is there any reason to object to that? I think I think it keeps things simple.
Commissioner Hill, if I may, just to make sure I'm on the same page on this. Are you saying to put that in the resolution that's before the Planning Commission tonight? Uh, because I noticed you 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 were on that finding on the second page there, I want to say it was. Or are you asking for us to to tweak the the projects where the 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 the, sorry, I'm stuttering here, the uh twenty twenty resolution?
I'm not sure how that would go. I think it would be the former, that it would go in our re- our resolution of extension, right?
Got it. Okay, I understand.
And the way the the boilerplate that Rebecca pulled up, it's section one, recitals. And it just lists ABC, these are the statutory COVID bases that that was granted under.
Rebecca's go.
And so the idea is we could just add those in to any of these that we're gonna pass um that have made the COVID excuse. And we don't need to, they don't need to be delayed another two weeks, that it's just a clerical matter now. We say, go ahead and add those, and we're done.
Oh, a- and and I'm sorry, Commissioner Hill, the reason why I brought up what I did is, um, because I I believe when I heard you speak, you mentioned you read off section four B, no other changes to the conditions contained in Planning Commission Resolution twenty dash zero six are made, and all other findings, terms and conditions contained in Planning Commission Resolution twenty oh six shall remain in full force and effect. And I thought I heard you say that there was a change to that, and so that's why I was asking about this particular. So if I understand you correctly, what you mean is just add a recital, it's basically adding a recital that explains why the commission granted the the extension, whether it be COVID construction delays or something like that. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I and I'm just, now that you've mentioned it, and I'm not sure whether that needs to go in reference to Resolution twenties dash zero six, or just in the current, that I don't know. It just should be part of the record.
Oh, so I think.
Rebecca's had her hand up for a while. Yeah, thank you.
Um, I was just wanting to clarify, I believe Craig was referencing the recitals uh and F from the Wolsey Fire Extensions that we sent, because those three recitals were related to the the different um measures related specifically to COVID. The other ones in the recitals, and that would then be part of the new resolution rather than the prior, the resolution that's being extended. So it'd just be added to the recitals in section one?
Yeah, and I don't, I I, you're right, the thing you handed me has both Wolsey and COVID recitals co-mingled, and I guess I'm just referring to the COVID one. If their point here is there do causes about COVID, then we just put in the COVID related ones.
So in that case, and if we're referring to Resolution twenty two twenty nine, that would be recital CDNF.
That sounds correct. Yes. Yeah, because you're right, there there are others, some of those other ones are, well, H H is COVID related.
So I mean, I saw, and and so Commissioner, I I I think I I I I understand that if the if your potential finding of 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 due cause is is related to the fact that there exists a state of emergency. So not just that 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 COVID is out there in the world impacting people, however they may do it, but rather it is specifically geared towards this idea that a state of emergency exists. We can, I can, I can, I can take this resolution. I don't necessarily think we need all of the other ones, you know. I think we can simply say, you know, due to the fact that there is a state of emergency, as issued on March fourth by the governor, on March sixteenth by the city council, um, you know. I I I don't know whether, sure, we 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 can include F dealing with AB fifteen sixty one, which I guess also genuflects to this idea of COVID impacting. Um, if that's, if that's the 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 direction, I'm comfortable that I can, I can take that and work with staff and 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 effectuate that, if that if that is, in fact, your your position.
Right, so that right now, you don't have to make any further explanation than COVID. And then those people in the future who might have a COVID related problem don't get to say, oh, because it's just a statutory emergency, they're gonna have to really make a better case.
Thing, right, the one thing I do want to make sure is so that we what we can't do in this resolution is preclude anyone in in the future that says, just because I'm no longer in a state of emergency, I I don't get to at least make my case to you all. What I mean by that, yeah.
The point is, they will have to make their case. They don't have to make their case right now.
Well, yes, they do. They 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 still, the 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 requirement is 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 good cause. So if that is not you know, the agreement of this body, that should be known, but there there is no rubber stamping. It is before you tonight, based off of that language. I understand past practices. Each case is new, and so I will, I will leave it at that. And and Rebecca, have we taken public comment on this?
He's not taken disclosures uh or a public comment.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about disclosures and then we got, okay, uh, disclosures, Chair Hill, I mean, Chair Hill, Commissioner Hill.
Oh, thank you. Okay, uh. I'll get my gavel. Um. Uh, none other than I spoke with Richard and, as I said before, Richard and Patrick before the meeting, just to see if this made sense to do and with, and and I was just concerned that we wouldn't be delaying people another two weeks if we did want to fold this update into the resolution. So that's all I have.
Oh, Vice Chair Mazza?
None.
Commissioner Peak?
None.
Myself, none. Okay, public comment?
Thank you. Um. Is, let me see if I see Sarah Laws in the meeting as the applicant. If you are present in the meeting and under a different name tonight, if you could click the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. I don't believe the applicant is present in tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Eric, do you want to make the motion? You want me to make the motion?
Um, just we're talking about three B, three, three B one now, right?
Only three B one.
Yeah. Well, so I I would make the motion to approve it, including the statutory language of COVID emergency as as supporting their due cause uh argument.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hill?
Oh, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. I'm I'm so sorry, Chair Smith, I apologize, just want to be sure that Commissioner Hill, so just so we're clear, I would, the staff will, in my office, will work together to ensure that the three different, the three different recitals from Resolution number twenty two dash nine, first one dealing with the March fourth, twenty twenty state issued, um, uh, state of emergency, second one being the March sixteenth, twenty twenty, city issued emergency, and then the description of AB fifteen sixty that is what you mean by the inclusion of the COVID related recitals, correct, sir?
Yes.
Perfect. Sorry about that, Chair Smith.
Not a problem. Okay, uh, Rebecca, I guess roll call, please.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Nope.
Motion carries.
Okay, three B two. Extension of coastal development permit seventeen dash zero four zero, variance number seventeen dash zero zero four, seventeen dash zero zero five, seventeen dash zero five three, and eighteen dash zero three five. And site plan review number seventeen dash zero one five. A request to extend the Planning Commission's approval for construction of a new two story, single family residence and associated development disclosures.
None here.
None, none, none with me either. Uh, any public comment or any uh?
Well.
The public hearing, then we'll make a motion.
Yes, uh, Carnegie is is present in the meeting. If you would unmute him, please, Alex. He is available to respond to any questions you might have. You want to make any initial comments?
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, yeah, this is, by my understanding, the first uh request for an extension. Uh, the the CDP was granted uh January twenty twenty, right before uh the pandemic, so it'll set to expire uh early January twenty twenty three, of course, and by my understanding, the first one given some kind of due cause is uh generally approved, because there is some, the LIPs gives allows for about five years, I think, generally speaking on a project, so uh yeah, that's, we are in process of uh, we are in plan check, we're on the third round, uh, everything is moving forward, we're very close to uh permits, so not much more I can add there, given uh on top, except the fact on top of a COVID related issues, I am the new owner as of September twenty twenty one. So I don't know if the the Planning Commission takes that into consideration, whether there's been a change in ownership and, you know, the the delays that come from that, you know, the due diligence. All that kind of stuff that, you know, tends to uh, sidetrack a project moving forward, so there is that also, I don't know if that's a consideration for the planning commission. But besides that, um, no further comments from me as the owner and the applicant, uh. Thank you.
Thank you, Carnegie, if there are any other members of the public present in the meeting that wish to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen now. And seeing none.
Okay, back to us, um, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, so this one qualifies for the statutory COVID due process rationale. Right, and 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 I would uh, move to approve it on that basis and with just the observation that. Change of ownership is expressly not a valid reason, not a uh, due cause per se. Um, but but they have plenty to refer to with the. Statutory COVID stuff, so I'll I'll move to approve this one.
Second it.
Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
So this is the same language as the last one?
Yes.
What's your?
Wait, hey, hey, that that was my understanding, but in looking back. Commissioner Hill, that was your intent, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I I don't know why we have to put something on some on these people, so no, I don't want to add extra language to an extension, so, okay, three to one.
Motion carries.
Um. Three B. Three, right, yeah. Um, extension coastal development permit number sixteen dash zero two six. Site plan review number sixteen dash zero two nine. And demolition permit number sixteen dash zero two seven, or yes, zero two seven. Request to extend the planning commission's approval for construction of a new single-family residence and associated development. Disclosures.
None for me.
Um.
Commissioner? Uh, I do consider the applicant a personal friend, but no way would it affect my uh, decision on this project.
Okay, and nothing for me, um. The applicant or public comment?
Um, looking through the meeting, um, don't see our applicant Robin Marusa, Maruzi. From Birch.
I don't see him either, or anybody that works with Doug.
Um, is if anyone else is present in the meeting wishes to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen now. And seeing none.
Okay, back to us, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, this one's a little bit different, um. It without the A B fifteen sixty one eighteen month extension. They would have, their five years would have been up in January twenty twenty two. When you add the eighteen months that you get from fifteen sixty one, that takes them out to the end of this June. So legally, we could grant them an extension through the end of June. Uh, without exceeding the five years plus eighteen months. Um, and they've said they don't need more than a few months, so I think that's fine. I think if we wanted to go to a year or more, that's problematic, because then we're getting past the five years plus eighteen months. So I I would make a motion to grant them an extension through the end of June.
I second it.
And now, and I just want to be in, do, did you want to include that the the same COVID language? As in the recitals as the other ones or or no?
Well, maybe that's something you could answer, I mean, it, they are making the COVID uh, due cause excuse, so on that basis, I would. They've also, they exhausted their five years in January twenty twenty two, so. You almost don't even need to make the rationale now, because the only way they get six and a half years is by applying that. A B fifteen sixty one, it's sort of self-evident in this case, does that make sense? So I don't know, what it, six and one half a dozen on the other, yeah.
Wasn't your point to make it not self-evident when it comes up again, to have it in the language? I don't see having it in the language if if it comes, if they ask for another extension, if it takes some more than a couple of months.
Well, okay, the the simple consistent thing would be to say, yes, put the COVID language in this one, too.
Yeah, I will second that.
So add the language and then reduce section. Four A from January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, and you said the end of June twenty twenty three, correct, Commissioner Hill?
Yeah. Because, Patrick.
I understand, no, I I get it, I understand.
Right, I mean, I don't know, we we don't have an option necessarily, right?
But. Um.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to overstep, um, this, this one was a little bit unusual in that. The planning commission adopted a one-year resolution. Setting the expiration date at July twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, but it was later reviewed by the city attorney's office. And it was determined that A B fifteen sixty one should apply, and that reset the project expiration date. So. Technically, this might be considered as a first extension.
That has nothing to do with it, they don't get a get a number of extensions that has passed with us. And six and a half years, uh.
Is, can I ask, is there any rationale in this project if we know and we're hearing from our planning department, and they're saying that. This project is taking X amount of time, they're expecting it to take a few more months?
We have our case planner for the project Fletcher Allen present in the meeting.
Could we get like an update from him on where it's at, because I I just, I I guess what I think we should avoid here is avoid them having to come back and say, give us a few more months. You know, and we can base that off of what our staff says, is that, I mean. Chair Smith, what's the thought on that?
I I, that was exactly what I was gonna do and find out if these are original owners or not, but we have Mr., we have uh, Associate Planner Alan on, then let's hear from him.
Hi, gentlemen, um, yeah, this, um, this is the original owner still, so, um. Um. And technically Rebecca is right, we, you could make the argument that this is the first. Extension request, so, um. I'm available for your questions.
Question.
The the question is, how how close are they to finishing?
They haven't begun, um, the grading, they haven't been allowed to begin the grading, so. Um, they haven't begun.
And Fletcher? Do they have their permits to start?
That's what I meant.
They got their permits to start, but they're not allowed to grade until April.
And and Fletcher, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this the one, too, where the owner was looking at perhaps coming in and reducing the scope of work?
Yeah, so they already have reduced the scope of work through substantial performance. That was approved in twenty twenty, um. And so. They are, they are proposing a new project, um, and so, but the, this project that we, um, that was approved is. You know, the components that we are likely going to move forward with this are the septic system and, um. And one accessory structure.
So they're ready, they're ready to start and they just are waiting for the spring great weather, right?
Well, they'd like to, they'd like to revise their project, um, to keep the existing structures. And not demo them and replace them with new structures, so, uh, there are some moving parts here, but they do want to move forward with their approved septic. And like I said, uh, detached accessory structure, um. And then some exterior development, so, um. Yeah, they are likely going to be coming in with, um, a separate application, uh, to pursue a a remodel.
That would be a different application, wouldn't it?
It would be.
So it wouldn't, this wouldn't matter.
So this would not include the remodeling?
Yeah, it would not be sixteen oh two six. Which looks to me like nine years. But, uh.
Commissioner Peak?
So. I get Fletcher, and just, you know, you you gauging this, you have the contact with them, and and for the record, I've never spoke with Will about this project, or the lawyers about this project at all. Um, but. In in your conversations with them most recently or whatever, do you see any reason for us to make this extension go beyond this, uh, July? Date, you know, kind of referring to the language that Craig was saying. Because, you know, I I just want to be, you know, I don't, I don't want to see this coming back in front of us in a couple of months if there's no reason for it to. You know, if we made it six months or something. Or did what the, you know, did it for a year.
You know, I think the. Yeah, the uh, the remodel that they have in mind. Has yet to be approved through planning, so that would need to be achieved. And then they would, uh, you know, go through plan check and then, um. You know, do all their grading at at once, um. But the timeline for that is hard to predict. Um, first we need a planning approval, uh, so. Like I said earlier, you know, this project has been reduced in scope, and it's really just the septic, uh. And some landscaping and a detached accessory structure, uh, and a pool, so it's really. Uh, that's, that's all they're choosing to push forward with this, uh, just so you know.
Thank you.
My question of, I guess Craig or somebody who knows, uh. If they come in with a new project, it won't qualify for the COVID exemption, is that correct? It has to be by a certain date. The application.
Is is that in reference to that, to that, that bill that I was referencing, A B fifteen sixty one? Correct, yeah, the the only, the only housing entitlement that bill applies to is, as I said before. Issued and in effect prior to March fourth, twenty twenty, and then set to expire prior to December thirty first, twenty twenty one.
So so that would have no effect on this project.
So, so if they.
Next project, if they decide to remodel.
If they come in for a new application and it's a, it's a new, new planning approval, whatever that looks like, A B fifteen sixty one. Based off of that narrow hypothetical would not apply.
Okay, so. This is their, this is their last A B, whatever it is, sixteen months, and, uh. We're using that, so I I don't see a problem here, uh, by the way, I don't know what's going on, but. I can drive around Malibu and point you to ten projects that started grading in the last month. So I don't know what this April thing's all about.
Okay, but however you, whether you say they. Have used the eighteen months yet or not, and I think Rebecca said they, we already counted that. Regardless, the perm, the approval was from July twenty seventeen. And so we have a five-year period and we have an eighteen months, so we have six and a half years. That takes us out to the end of June this year. To get beyond six and a half years, I don't know that we have discretion to approve anything longer than that. What what would be our authority to say, sure, take another year or two? That's a question for Patrick, I guess, that we, don't we have a hard line at six and a half years?
So in, go ahead, Richard.
I was just gonna say, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong on this, the. The five-year was a policy put in place by the city council. There is no specific code section that says. You have X years. Uh, worth of extensions, uh. For example, I know with administrative plan reviews, there is a a set limit in the code, but I believe that's the difference here with CDPs, correct, Pat? It's really up to the discretion of the 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 planning commission based on the guidance from the council under that policy.
Yeah, that's accurate.
And but Richard, uh, I want to point out that. They're saying that they can start in the next couple of months, and. If they don't. Come back in June. If we have discretion.
Correct, that is correct, Commissioner.
Do I move the question?
Right, can I make a motion to get this so that they get the extension to a June or whenever that cutoff period of time is?
That is the most.
That's.
I don't.
Yeah, I could say July, July something.
It's July, no. Um, I I lost it, I thought I had it somewhere in the text.
It was June thirty first, wasn't it?
But June thirtieth, but, yeah.
Yeah, so that was the motion, I believe, if you made a motion, didn't you make a motion?
And and but but I just want to be sure, maybe I'm getting my my math wrong, which is a very distinct possibility. The original approval was July twenty fourth, twenty seventeen, correct? And so operating under the assumption that the eighteen months. Plus the five-year policy, which we're not, we're not guided by, that would be six and a half years, so six years. From Ju- July twenty fourth, twenty seventeen would be July twenty fourth. Twenty twenty three, plus another. Six months, or I I could be wrong, I just want to make sure, Commissioner Hill, that that, that what, what, that what I heard you is effectuated in your motion, I'm not trying to change it.
Yeah, maybe my math was wrong.
Well, that's. But does that put us to January of twenty twenty four then?
More or less, it's it's it's, it looks like it's a week before, because it's July twenty fourth, which is roughly a week. Short, no, no, I'm wrong on that, too, because it's the seventh, it would be, it would be the end of January, yeah.
Can somebody confirm the math? Somebody with a.
But so to to July twenty four. Yeah, no, that's right.
It sounds like if that's the language you're going for, that kind of alleviates the concern that I had.
Yeah, yeah, it's that, so that puts, that puts six and a half years at January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
I'll go with that, I'll go with that, is that your motion?
That'll be my mo-, yeah, that's my motion, because I I I just, I didn't want to go beyond whatever our nominal discretion.
With with the language that includes the stuff we've done the other two, correct?
Correct, yeah, because they are relying on the COVID. Yeah, okay. So are you straight with that, Patrick?
I am, thank you very much for the clarification, we, I am, at least from my perspective, I am good to go.
Sorry if my math was, well, not if, sorry that my math was misleading. And actually wrong.
Okay, I guess we have a motion and we have a second.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
Hey, this is the part, this is the part of the program. Where I have to recuse myself, because I am bidding on this job. So Vice Chair Maza? It's all yours, and you guys can text me when you.
I'm also pulling number four A. And, uh.
Hang on, hang on.
We we don't, we also.
Aren't we on three B four?
We are.
We are.
Before.
Correct, and so Chair Smith, I just want to be sure that's the one that you are recusing yourself due to a financial interest based off of. Possible future income.
You bet.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Any job that you bid on in the future, uh. Or potentially bid on, you recuse yourself.
Always have.
Is there any call to to shift it around and hear the the big item first and then let him go home?
I want to do four, three B four.
Okay.
We we could possibly take a brief recess and call Chair Smith so that he can rejoin the meeting to hear five A.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, but we have to do three before first.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, other than Craig's. Um. Language, which should be in here.
I I also make sure we 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 take public comment before we start deliberating.
And and should, could we possibly take disclosures also first?
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans.
None for me.
Um, I, let's see, I asked Richard about this, I'm trying to think if I learned anything. Hmm, if if I learn anything, it'll come to me, I I did have a conversation with Richard.
And I have none.
Thank you.
And let me see if the applicant is present. Um. So the applicant for this item is Cheryl Beebe of Prism. There we go, um, so if you could un-open the microphone for Shay, if you have, have you opened the public hearing portion? To Vice Chair M- Maza?
Yes, we're opening the public hearing.
Thank you. And please unmute for Shay.
Can you guys?
She represents the applicant?
Yes, we can.
She is the applicant.
Okay.
Yes, welcome, we hear you.
Okay, thank you, um, so, um.
Okay, thank you, um, so, um, as the applicant, however, Joyce Mendlin also is the applicant and the one who's kind of handling this now. Um, so. Essentially, what I'll say is I support staff's motion. To approve the resolution as is. And I will let Ms. Mendlin. Explain to you the exact situation that we're in. As to why I can't. Do anything at this time, um, well, not to mention it's the rainy season and. It's slopes we're working with and, um, by the way, John, that is the rule. Why you see those other grading projects going on, twenty-five percent slope or more, you can't do grading in the rainy season, so if the other ones are less than twenty-five percent slope. Then you can't.
I can assure you can.
Okay. Yep, let's, let's just stay on, on topic here on, on.
Yes, yes, Patrick, so the, uh, anyway, I support staff's motion, I do appreciate all their work on this, um, I know it's been going on for a long time, but. I really hope that you will approve this last extension that we're asking for and I will allow Ms. Mendlin to explain. Better than I can as to why. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Here.
And is Joyce Mendlin present in the meeting, if you are, if you could please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen now?
My hand, my hand is up.
Thank you, we are able to hear you now.
Good. Um. Hi, I, I believe that Ms. Beebe. Um. Is actually the one. Much more qualified to speak here at this planning commission. Uh, she has been, uh, she's designated as the applicant now, she is the one who has. Uh. Guided this application. Um, over time and she is experienced. My role is, um. More limited, I'm an attorney and I represent one of the property owners. And we are in an arbitration. And the arbitration, um, has been delayed. Um. Twice. And as a result of that, we have had to come in for this extension. So, um. I, I, I support the staff's. Uh, motion, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this. Um. And, um. I can answer questions about. The arbitration, but. For the actual permitting process and so on, this BB is much more qualified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there, are those all the speakers?
Those are the, all the speakers.
We will close the public hearing. Um, Craig, do you have comments? You have your hand up.
Yeah, sorry, I was muted, yes, um, yeah, I, I. I would like to know more, becau- and this is directed, I guess mainly to Ms. Mendlin, though maybe Ms. Beebe, I'm not sure. But, um. The negotiation. Is not expressly. A, a, a basis for extraordinary circumstances. I mean, and you said, well, it's COVID, well. You know, you can talk on the phone or have a Zoom meeting. To negotiate something. So my point of view, I'd, I'd like to understand more and better why the arbitration really has taken so long. And also maybe in part of that. How is it that? The past owner is still involved in the negotiation, Mr. Rappaport, whereas shouldn't it be the current owner, Mr. Katz, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't understand the situation clearly. And, um. On its face, it doesn't look like there's a basis of, for extraordinary circumstances, but maybe you can explain how there is.
Okay, before we go there, uh. Let's get all the questions out and then we'll go back, um. And ask the question since the public hearing is closed, uh. Does anybody else want to comment, I have comments. Nope, okay.
Um, Ms. Beebe has her hand raised.
Yeah, but she's got to wait until we're done and.
Okay.
I read the policy. On how we can grant extensions. And I see absolutely nothing in the letter from Rosenberg Mendelson and Rosen. That gives an excuse. We have. Number one, uh. Both parties are applicants. Both parties. Their addresses are listed as co-applicants. And. Uh. There is nothing that, that. Anybody else but the two parties involved in this application who want an extension can do anything about. Uh. It doesn't say you can stall. Your permit because you don't want to talk to each other. Uh, especially when you're co-applicants, if you're, if you're a. Neighbor who's objecting. And nobody will talk to you, that's something else. But we have both applicants talking to each other. And none of their excuses. Are listed in the due cause, which we're allowed to use. None of them. Okay.
John, don't they list the pandemic in there and COVID?
They say they can't talk to each other because of COVID. Okay? That's patently false, as Craig pointed out. They're talking to us right now. And. Um. That's a voluntary action, it would be different. If it weren't the two applicants. But it's, it's the applicants. Saying, we can't do this because we don't feel like talking to each other, because maybe somebody's got COVID on the other side of the phone line. Or the Zoom line, or whatever, or another partner in the firm. Or et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so there's nothing in here, by the way, this is a. This is a. Landslide remediations. That we were told by our. Landslide expert did not exist, okay, so. I have questions on why you wait. Five to six years. To fix a landslide. Which already caused landslides below. Um. So. When, when we give an extension. We need a reason. And the reason is spelled out by the city council. In, in their, uh, L, LCP policy number five. And nothing in here. Says there's an extreme condition. Or, uh. Can't obtain a, a construction loan, one of these houses costs a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, of course they can't. Uh. A personal reason such as illness. None of them are ill. Um. Divorce, death, restricted access to property. Because of an existing lease. Or, uh, agency approvals, none of those exist. None. You have to have one of them.
Don't they have restricted access because they're not able to come to an agreement on it, I mean, isn't that?
Applicant, uh, both, both parties can say yes.
Okay.
Both parties can say yes, they want to say yes, off they go. But. That it doesn't say, ah, if the two parties in the app, in the, uh, P, uh, application can't agree with each other. You should approve it, it doesn't say that. It says. These guys are applying for an extension. Under the rules under. The LCP policy five. And then they're supposed to state that in writing and they don't. And we've always held these letters, it's important, you have to say why you want one. And. It has to be under the, uh, LCP policy number five. So I don't know when this expires, but I think tomorrow morning they could decide how to, after. What is it, six years? When was this issued?
Well, well, John, they, they, their reason is that they. They can't negotiate, and so let's maybe, let's hear some detail about how that could be the case.
Okay, the, the question is, uh, Shay or. The other person, whoever wants to answer it. Why can't you negotiate?
Can, do we only have one of the parties here, or do we have both of the parties present?
I only see one hand up.
I, no, but I'm asking, is one of the person representing one side and one of the, and. Is Mendlin representing one side and Shay representing the other side?
Except there's, there, yes, that appears that way, but there are no two sides, there's only one side. Only one applicant. Okay, so, uh.
Great question, though.
Who wants to go for Shay or? Joyce? Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say Shay had her hand up first, so we'll, can you unlock her? Okay, yeah. We can hear her.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I can answer a couple of the questions, then I will turn it over to Joyce as she's better legally equipped to answer some of the. Due to the, our, um, arbitration stuff, I'm not an attorney. Um. So. One thing we do have, sadly, my father passed away. But that doesn't affect the arbitration. Um, now, what I will tell you is the basis for the, the, um, I suppose you would call it a lawsuit, but it rather it's, uh, gone to arbitration now with Judge Stone. And, um. It's in, in regard to construction access. And so I do know that's, uh. Been quite a bit of the problem, I'm not privy to all the details of the suit, Joyce can. Fill you in on that, Ms. Mendlin. And, um. Uh, I'll let her kind of Kurt Rappaport, the old owner of two five oh four oh. Is still involved in all of this. Because he is still paying all the city fees and. The bills and he has to be involved because he. Is in the arbitration with Mr. Zucker, the owner of twenty-five thousand PCH. And it's a prod, the project to answer, I forget if it was Hill or Mazza who asked. Um, the. Project is between. It, it covers two properties, meaning at the property lines. And they function together as one. Um, project, one won't work without the other, now, um, John, this was not a landslide. This is a preemptive measure. To protect a slope that has a, quite a possibility it could go, given the global, um, slope repair, if you recall that one. Next door on the two five oh four oh. Share, um, the Trentos and then everything down below. So, um, this is a preemptive measure, so it's not actually a slide. But we know that slope has the potential to go at some point. And in speaking with Christopher Dean in geology. He agreed it's all one project and that's why you see the two applicants. Um, coexisting on this. Uh, it was decided there'll be two separate building permits. For the street files, but. Uh, it'll be done under one. Coastal development permit. Instead of duplicating paper everywhere. On the same exact project, because as we all know, that can confuse people even more. So that's why you see that, um. Anyway, I'm going to hand it over to Joyce now and.
Let me ask you one ques- question before you go, uh.
Yes, sir.
Does Kurt Rappaport have any? Property interest, not any other kind of interest, is he on the deed?
Is he on the what deed?
He's, they said that, no, he doesn't own the deed, what it sounds like is, is some part of a condition of sale. That this was supposed to get resolved and he was.
You have to be on the deed to be an applicant, so, but I assume that. His, whoever he sold it to went along with it, I just want to make that clear, uh.
That would be Mr. Gates. And. Um, yeah, Kurt is no longer on the deed, however, I am still the applicant for both parties because. It's one CDP and, um, as I've stated, Kurt is paying all the fees, like the. Extension fee and, um. You know. Well, my fees and then if we needed to update something for planning, like a, a survey or this or that. Kurt would be the one paying for that as well. I know this one's really confusing, um, Richard and Tyler have been with it for a long time and. They know the history as well, so, um. But yeah, I, I, I'd like to let Ms. Mendlin, um, she's more equipped to speak about the arbitration and how all that works between. The, um, dual applicants and Skylar was. Correct. So I work for Kurt. And Ms. Mendlin works for, um, Mr. Zucker for Mark.
Well, can I ask you a question then? Kurt has no property interest. How can he be an applicant?
I guess that's, well, that's the way that they, I didn't file the letter, um, I just put, uh, some of the paperwork together, but.
John, he's probably still on there as the applicant, because when this was originally done, it was done under his name, so maybe that's clerical thing that hasn't gotten changed yet, and he may have some financial obligation to get.
Hey, man, I just want to get the answer. Did he sell this to Katz prior? To this wall being designed and applied for?
To all this being designed and applied for, no, no, my goodness, no, um. This happened during the whole. Um, process, um. It, when Kurt. Ended up selling it, so, um. Yeah, uh, I, 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 I don't know what to tell you, John, it's a confusing one for me too.
No, no, I just, this is the reason I'm asking, okay, so let's, let Joyce, if she can, try to explain it. And, uh, let, un-unlock her. Joyce, what I'm trying to understand is, we're sitting with a situation where we have one project. Apparently one applicant. And apparently. You're asking for an extension because. The applicant and his real estate agent. Or whoever else is the other applicant. On the same project. Claim that they have a COVID reason they can't arbitrate. Is that correct?
Uh, not exactly, no. Um. It's a joint application. And the application was signed both by. Uh, Mark Zucker. The owner of twenty-five thousand Pacific Coast Highway, who was my client. And, uh, Mr. Kates, actually his representative. Um, who is the owner of the former Rappaport property. And it, so it's, it's not really an issue of. Uh, the applicants not talking to each other, because the applicants at this point. Um. It's a, it's a little murky, uh, because Shay has stayed involved because she has shepherded this thing for many years. Um. It's not a situation of the applicants not talking to each other because they can't talk to each other, the applicants are the new owner. Of, uh. What was the Rappaport property in Zucker. And, um. The. Issues that have required. An arbitration. Are, um. Access and then also, um. Mr. Rappaport, um. Has the obligation to. Mr. Zucker to install these caissons. He then sold to Mr. Kates and he, he, um. He entered into that obligation long ago. Um. And before he developed his property. Um. I'm not exactly sure why he did, he didn't put them in, but he. Sold the property and then had an agreement with Mr. Kates. Um. For. Explaining that, not really explaining, but stating that he would be putting the caissons in and he would indemnify Mr. Kates and so on. Or anything related to. That. Uh, construction. So, uh, there are many complications that have developed in, among this now triangle. Where the person who has the obligation. Um, isn't an owner anymore. And so. Being unable to resolve this, although we did try and we actually. Uh, had a mediation and we did reach a settlement, but then. Our contention is that was. Not followed through on and we have needed the help. Our contention is that was not followed through on, and we have needed the help. Of Judge Stone through an arbitration to decide this. Now, the arbitration has been continued and that. That would be a somewhat COVID related. I've, I've listened to what's been going on in the prior hearings and I understand. There are some automatic extensions for that and so on. Um, I'm not familiar with that. This is the first time hearing of these things. Uh, I'm quite familiar with our arbitration and our problems here and. We, we really need, we need um. People go to arbitration when it's complicated in it and uh, this case is quite complicated in that regard. Um, the case zones as um Cheryl Beebe said, yes, they were a preemptive measure. There was a finding of necessity. In the past, when um, the permits were issued and we, we have that in writing and um. Staff approved that and and the council approved that and so on. So there, this, the case zones will be helpful. Um, overall, and um. So there. The um, application um. Uh, I don't know if we've.
Joyce, can I ask you a specific question real quick? Sorry to cut you off.
Sure.
How close are they to reaching an agreement to move this forward and get going on this project?
Um. I. I just submitted some paperwork to Mr. Rappaport. Uh, about uh, three weeks ago, and when I get the responses to those. Questions that I forward to him. Um, I would be very equipped to answer that. Um, and they, they were specifically, are you going to put these case zones in?
Okay, thank you.
Uh. Question, go ahead, Skylar.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, John and Craig, I mean. So we understand that we, we're, everyone's kind of familiar with the involvement of everybody in this situation, and. Why don't we just grant a six month extension that puts them into the time when they can start construction? It lights a fire under their ass. To work out this agreement or it's going to expire. And that seems like a better solution. Um, than not granting anything. Because you clearly heard her state that COVID was an issue. COVID was an issue with the courts, whether or not. They postpone it for other reasons. We are not going to get a direct answer on all of that. But it seems like that would be the prudent thing to do here.
But I have two comments here, John. One, I would like to hear more of a nexus between, you know, when they say. They've been negotiating access. This has been exacerbated by the pandemic. I have yet to hear anything that suggests that a negotiation is effective. Maybe there's a good reason. I I haven't heard it yet. And my second thought is. Basically, they're looking at till ten months, really till the end of December. Um, and so to me, Skylar, the question is. If if they could get it done before then, well, maybe that's great, but is this more intractable? In terms of how these parties are relating to each other such that it it would be less painful for us to deny it now and. And let the new parties work out a new deal. You know, is this, is this just gonna keep dragging out? So I guess first question would be for Ms. Medlin, Mendlin. Um. How, wh-what is the COVID nexus here? Exactly. I mean, I know we've all been dealing with COVID world, but. The ghost, making a negotiation, that's, that's not really a. It's not the same thing as a supply chain issue, for example.
Uh, I don't know if we'll have a supply chain issue with regard to the steel that's needed. Um, I expect there will be some delay with that. Um. What I do know is the arbitration delays are COVID related. Um. Uh. It took quite a while to work out. Uh, remote arbitrations at signature resolution, how that was gonna work. Um, getting the parties um able to do that and actually originally. Um, the owner, uh, Mr. Kates. Was um not going to be. On the. Twenty five oh forty property. But because and, and there was. It's. There was. A window where the construction. Might have been able to take place, but then because of COVID, then they, the. Twenty five oh forty owner. Had to stay in that property.
Sounds like they don't want to do construction when they're at home.
That's the, that's the case for Kate's, that's Mr. Zucker, my client. Uh. We can work around that.
Okay, alright, so.
What's holding it up now? What, what's holding up the negotiation?
Is it, when they're gonna construct or?
Are they?
There's two parts to this. One, they can't do construction before April, so they couldn't even start right now if they wanted. Is that correct, Richard?
Yeah.
No.
Given this, so there, there is a moratorium on grading. If unless the grading can be demonstrated that it doesn't flow or affect. Uh, sensitive habitat areas or drainage. I I'm not the building official, but I think given the amount of earth movement with this particular one, this I think would fall under the moratorium.
But what's holding up the negotiation now? Why, why?
I I don't even know if that matters for us, if that's even our, our business at this point. She's told us COVID took it a long time. The guy doesn't want to have. Construction on it when he's at the house. I mean. You know, what are we gonna, we want to deny it, deny it?
No, but I.
I mean, I, I was saying, let's give him a six month, let's, let, I'll make a motion and you guys can say yes or no. To grant a six, um, I'll give him the extension that they're asking for, because I realize that they can't start until uh, April. Um, or middle of April, uh, to grant the extension and. Uh, if I have a second, great. If not, we know where it's going.
Explain why I'm bringing this up. We get requests for extensions. And. Those, that request requires a letter. Saying what policy, under policy five. Do they need an extension for? Now, we've heard that. The, the project is only one applicant. Okay? This is a joint project. They didn't pay double fees. They aren't doing two applications. Okay? So therefore. We've been told by the attorney, gee, they could have started it, but the guy didn't want to live here. Uh, when they were doing it, or. This, that, the other thing, but nothing even close to the fact. That it was held up for these five reasons. Um, and. We've always been very strict on. Following council policies. For example, if they came in one day late on this. With this letter, one day. It's off. Okay, no variances, no nothing, it's over. That's it, that's a hard and fast rule.
I, I very much understand that. I just think, having heard from them. I mean, the letter does mention the COVID, it's does not elaborate it on the way that she did verbally. I would like to make a motion to grant an extension for that reason.
I want to continue with just a little more explanation. We, in my opinion. We should not give extensions because some guy doesn't want to build on his property. When he's there. Okay, that's not an excuse. Okay, we should also not give extensions when the applicants. Are the ones that are causing. Causing the delay. No other factor has caused a delay, other than the fact that they, they, they are fighting with each other. I guess over who pays for it? I don't quite understand that because. Uh, one of them mentioned that. Zucker and Rappaport were in agreement. Um. So this is more than this project. This is saying, well, what else can you dream up? I don't want to build my house when I'm there. That's not a good excuse, and that's the only excuse I've heard.
I, I feel, I feel like the swing vote right here. Can I ask, Richard, what are the implications of not uh? Granting the extension now? They have to go back to square one? What does that involve in this case? But this, this is sort of a unique, semi-unique situation.
Yeah, this project essentially the, if you don't grant the extension tonight, the permit would essentially be. Uh, it would expire, it'd be done. Uh, they would have to come back, submit a new coastal development permit application. And they would have to go through, we would have to update the reviews and basically go through the project. Uh, if we were to follow the, the city's policy on processing it. You know, the same permit, uh, the same application but expired. Uh, in the past, we've done it for a reduced fee, so I would say there would be some impact there to the city. Uh, but that's what you're looking at, is they would have to essentially file for a new coastal development permit. And bring it before the commission for a hearing.
Are there any emergency safety considerations with regard to properties down on Malibu Road, for example? Um, I mean, is this a, are we dealing with this in a vacuum with the parties, or is this a, like, gotta get it done right now kind of thing?
Tyler, do you have an answer for that? I know that. Last I heard, we, there had been some stabilization that had been put in, but it's not a permanent fix. I feel like this is one of those, if you delay it. Eventually, something bad is gonna happen. Is that correct?
Yeah, from my understanding, yes.
Well, I feel. Why, why did we get testimony that this is not an emergency? This is not a landslide. We, we gotta get both answers from staff that are consistent.
We got, we got testimony that this is preventative, but I think, you know, if we were to, let's say. We have, you know, a really extreme rainstorm over the next week, right? That could make this a worse problem. So maybe right now there's not a problem, but there could be in the future. So I mean, obviously, there could be with any slope in Malibu. It would be um. Super frustrating to sit here, deny the permit and watch something bad happen. But I don't think that it's, it's not like a grave situation from what we've heard at this point.
Well, yeah, and uh, and it's been six, what, five years? You know, we gotta put this in, but we're gonna wait five years and talk about it.
Yeah, Vice Chair, as i-if I may, I, I just want to go back on, on a few comments about the policy briefly, if I may. You are accurate, of course. That was the implemented policy. That is a non-exhaustive list. It is still up to you all, whether, whatever before you all is due cause. And I did just want to make one quick clarification that the deadline to submit. That is in the L I P itself. It's not in the policy. It's actually specifically in the code. Um, and so that's not a policy we follow, rather that is in the code that we follow. And then, of course, the policy helps guide your, your, your decision. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I, that's chairman, uh. Chairman, uh, the chairman isn't here. I'll just repeat what he would say. We can approve anything. Well, in my opinion, we can't. We have to be consistent.
Well, John, John, tell me, tell me what's wrong with how, if I look at it this way. If we say, yes, we do have this statutory COVID thing, they have raised the COVID flag. And said, that was an issue. We still haven't had it explained to us how it was an issue exactly. But they have said, you know, so it would be. Hypocritical of us not to say, sure, you've got this COVID thing, all you had to do was say the magic word. How, how do we, how do you counter that?
I counter that by saying you can't lie on applications. Okay, and uh. And that's uh, primaphasia, okay? Courts did not cease to exist. Arbitrations did not cease to exist for five years. And but my main.
Tyler's, Tyler's got his hand up, Tyler.
My main point, my main point is, the applicant himself, the two of them. Caused the delay. There was no outside force. Okay, you don't want to be there when it's built. You know, you don't know who's gonna pay for it. You gotta go get a judge to say this, go say that, but it was no fault of the city. Or the city's codes or the extension codes. None, nothing. And that opens the whole, the whole, the reason we set up these policies. Is we got extension after extension after extension after extension. Finally, the city council said, oh, you gotta have some rules. You know, five years. After that. You had your shot. Okay, also had these rules that you gotta have some kind of reason. Not that I don't like the guy next door, or I'm gonna arbitrate against him, even though he's my co-applicant.
You make a strong point. Can we hear from Tyler?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hill. So um. I just wanted to add that um, I'm looking at a, a document that was published by the Supreme Courts that. Basically talks about the COVID situation with the courts and concludes that. Uh, the backlog of civil cases created by COVID nineteen could persist for years to come. So that was a conclusion made by the courts about um. Yeah, and so Tyler, thank you for that. Correct, I, I just want to be, be clear that, that what is before the planning commission tonight is, of course, whether or not that good cause standard has been met. We are not commenting on the veracity of anything in the application. We are not making a finding that they lied. We are not making. Really any finding about the court system outside of the fact whether or not this, this body comprised of you three individuals. And can make a finding that do cause exists. So I, I just want to be clear that none of the decisions tonight will be a. You know, arbiter of truth to the application. Instead, it is geared specifically towards L I P section thirteen twenty one. And of course, whether or not do cause exists. But thank you very much for that, Tyler.
Well, that's not really true, because our M M C, our L I P says.
John, we, we're gonna be here talking about this for five more hours. Let's make a decision. I, I, do I have a second or no?
Well, let me just give you, well, let me just give you a point. The city council worked on this for a year.
Correct, I, I was on the city council when that happened. I'm very, I'm, in fact, might have even brought it up to them to, to address it. For this very purpose, right? And I'm very familiar with it, and what I'm saying is, we have a letter from their attorney. That in it, and I'll quote from it, says. The parties have been discussing. Oh, wait, where? The.
I, I have it right here in front of me.
Yeah, read it. Oh, oh, sorry, which has been difficult and taken longer than expected, and this has been exacerbated by the pandemic. So. I realize. That the court system is backed up from the pandemic. Now, it is not the city's fault. At all, nor is it the city's fault that these people between themselves got to a place. They put themselves there, right? They disagree. That is not our fault. That is not staff's fault or anyone. But what I'm saying is. Here you have people saying, we're, we're near the finish line. We want to get this thing going. We want to get this done and taken care of. Let's grant them that so that we don't have to burden our staff with this whole project again. And move forward. Grant them the one year extension for this. That's the prudent thing to do, to be consistent. Yes, they might, they might not have elaborated on all of the different. Aspects of it, but they did mention that.
They also mentioned, Skylar, that they, they could have done it, but the guy was out of town.
And, and you know what? That in of itself is the most frustrating thing about any of this, because it, it makes me want to throw my hands up in the air and be like. Sorry, dude, you know, this is not the way that the world works, right? This is not fair. If I just all of a sudden don't want my neighbor to. You know, build his house next door to me because I'm living in my house. I mean. You know, I, it's, I agree with you. That is super frustrating.
Yeah, John.
My solution, if you don't get a second. Is denial, because this is a city council matter. They, they charged us with moving the planning commission along, not granting. Undeserved extensions. Uh, in this case. I don't even know how an applicant. A one applicant. Which is two people. Can cause a delay when they're the applicant. Okay? So if, if it was two different applications, different deal. Now, all you have to do is say, well, I got a partner over here and we don't just agree, so now I want an extension.
What do you think is different about a husband and a wife deciding what they're gonna do with their?
Problem, they got to work it out or get to. Okay, that's.
I'm just trying to lighten it a little bit.
No, I understand you. To me, we went through a huge process to set this up and just to say, oh, poor guys. Let them have another year. Uh, let the city council decide if they want to change their policy. As far as I'm concerned, they didn't even come.
Let, let, let me ask this of Patrick. Patrick, if we say we're gonna grant this extension, if it comes back for anything, I'll send it to the city council, because we don't want to hear it?
No, 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 can't do that. We have to.
Just joking, I'm just joking.
My, my, they have the right of appeal.
Correct, and, and, and I just want to be sure that, that the, the draft resol- Correct. And 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 I just wanna be sure that that the the draft resolution is one for approval, so. If the direction from this body is one of denial, it would have to come back at the at the next meeting. Pursuant to any formal motion that is that is made and seconded and voted on.
Okay.
A motion for approval, I'm gonna make a motion for denial. We'll do Skylar's. Unless there's any other discussion, we'll do Skylar's first. Since it's been, well, did you get a second?
Well, yeah, no, 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 no motion ha- ha- has received a second.
No, this is, this is entirely on me. And I, I I um. The way I see it, it's. These parties got themselves here by their own hand. I haven't heard a good case that this is an emergency situation that if we didn't address it immediately. That they, we just heard that it has been shored up, at least for a while. So uh I think it's important to stick with our rules, and I I need to line up with John on this one. Um I think they're they're just not, they're not even to the do cause stage. They just, they shouldn't have been here five years already.
Okay, so to straighten things out, Craig, uh. There is no second for Skylar's motion.
That's correct.
Not seconding it, I'm not seconding.
Skylar, I I mean, I'm I'm with you too. Each, both of you guys, I I hear you.
Let's move this thing forward. We're taking way too long.
I think we're gonna, we're sending it to the council is what's happening.
Okay, so now it's my motion to, how did you, I'm gonna say it, Patrick?
So it it would it would direct staff to bring back a resolution of denial. Finding that the required due cause for reasonable uh uh of extension of time. Is absent in this application for the reasons, for the reasons discussed during deliberations.
That's my motion.
Yeah, I I will second it with the clarification that. I don't feel like we can bring the the COVID statutory COVID rationales in here automatically because. They should have been able to settle this in the first place in a way that that wouldn't be a factor.
That's not part of the motion, so uh.
Okay, I'm just explaining my second.
Okay, uh can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Masa?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Negative.
Uh does anybody need a break?
Sorry, uh yes.
One more hearing?
No, no, break time.
Okay. I'm just gonna put this out there. I'm on a time clock, and then I I may have to go and then get back on my phone, so just so you guys know that. But I'm I'm ready to go through it, whatever you want. You wanna break, do a break.
It it might be helpful to have at least a brief recess so that we can contact Chair Smith to return to the meeting.
Okay, so we're gonna have a nine-minute break.
Twenty-five?
We're gonna have a nine-minute break. It will end at uh eight twenty-five.
Okay.
Everybody turn off your uh videos and audios.
I just, hey, I I I I apologize. I just wanna make, so it's eight twenty-five, cuz I, on my phone, which could be wrong, I have eight eighteen. So it's a seven minute, it comes back at eight twenty-five.
Oh, seven minutes, I'm the same, but he wants longer.
No, eight twenty-five PM local.
You got it.
Commissioner Peak, if you could uh kill your video, please.
Hello, where is everybody?
I'm here.
I'm here. Is our chairman here?
Uh did you get a hold of Dennis on the phone?
He's he's there on the screen, but I don't know if he's here.
But did you text him?
Rebecca was doing that.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Okay. Is it still Tuesday? All right, we are on to. Uh continued public hearings of which we have none, number four. So we are on five A, new public hearings. Okay, here we go. Coastal development permit Woolsey Fire number twenty-two dash zero zero three. Site plan review number twenty-three dash zero zero two, and demolition permit number twenty-three dash zero zero one. An application for the addition to the existing single-family residence. And various site improvements. We have Senior Planner Bobbitt, I believe, to give us the staff report.
Yes, um good evening, Chair Smith, members of the planning commission. The item you have before you tonight is for coastal development permit Woolsey Fire, number twenty-two zero zero three. For the property located at two nine seven three eight Cuthbert Road. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the vicinity map and aerial photograph of the project site. As you see outlined in red, the project site is rectangular in shape. And is approximately two um two acres and is zone rural residential two. Next slide, please. The subject parcel is located within the appeal jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. And some of the proposed additions are located within the appeal jurisdiction. And therefore, um this project does require coastal development permit. Next slide, please. Here is, the above diagram shows the LCP map stream that runs diagonally across the parcel frontage. The diagram shows the edge of the stream and that there's the new additions are in compliance um with a hundred-foot buffer. Next slide, please. The proposed scope of work is as follows. It's a four thousand six hundred and twenty square foot addition. To the previously approved residence approved under the planning verification. For a total development square footage of eight thousand four hundred and ninety-two square feet. The expansion of the existing swimming pool and spa. Associated pool equipment to be fully screened. The reconfiguration of the existing driveway. The resurfacing of the existing tennis court. A new one thousand and eighty-five up square foot outdoor seating area. Um including a trellis that is less than eighteen feet in height. A new one hundred and thirty-two square foot accessory structure. A new three thousand.
We lost her.
What happened there?
Goes on us.
We'll never know what it was now.
Mystery project.
I believe Jessica may be trying to rejoin the meeting. If she isn't unable to do so. She is ill this evening and Richard may need to take over.
Sure, she should be uh true. She is not feeling well this evening, so um. But uh the reason for this is apparently the power went out in her condo. It's back on, so we should have her momentarily back.
Skylar, you're the electrician. Why did her power go out just now?
Probably because a transformer blew up, but not the case if it turned back on. No, it's, I don't know if anyone's been outside, but it is cold and windy.
Yep, I can hear it.
Outside, man, it's crazy.
Answer, they didn't hire Pete Carr electric to put her in.
No, that's not the case. Might have surge protection. It might have shut it off for a second.
And the good news is she's outside city limits.
There is no wind over here yet.
I'm on the other side of the hill and it's very windy.
And it's always windy here in Trancas with that canyon, so I've got it going here.
Let's see. Rebecca, did you see her?
Um I see, I saw her earlier trying to log back in, and at the moment, I do not see her. And I don't have a message from her.
So she could have got internet and power and could have got shut back off.
Well.
That's what happens when a transformer blows.
That's what I was just thinking, Skylar. It could be that it tries to see if there's really a problem. I forget the proper term. But you get power for an instant and then it's gone. Oh, apparently. She can't log, she's rebooting her computer. She can't log back in. So as she's doing that, let's just keep going here. So what you have is the situation of a. And I'm sorry if I repeat some of this, but I got a little focused on her freezing up and disappearing. Uh this was a planning verification at first, and then the application. Uh they came back in the applicant and they wanted to do more than a fifty percent addition to the home. So they proposed the the CDP before you. So we have an expansion of the swimming pool and spa. There had been one on the property. There is reconfiguration of the existing driveway. There is an existing tennis court on the property. I know that we did receive some correspondence about concerns on lights, uh lighting of that. Tennis court. Uh the existing tennis court is to remain. They are resurfacing it. The applicant will be required to comply with dark skies. There's no provision. That exempts fire uh rebuild properties, fire rebuild properties have to come into compliance as well. They're proposing a outdoor seating area that that's covered by a trellis, and that's roughly about a little over a thousand square feet. There is a new one hundred and thirty-two foot uh square foot accessory structure. There is a new outdoor garden area, hardscaping and landscaping. They are proposing a new uh code compliant visually permissible front yard gate. And also new fencing up to six feet in height. There is grading and a new wastewater treatment system proposed with this application. The proposed structure is greater than twenty-four feet in height, and therefore there is a site plan review uh being processed. And also a demolition permit is being processed for the demolition of the remaining hardscape and landscaping. Uh that was not removed as part of the Cal O E S cleanup. If we can have the next slide, please. The what you're seeing in this particular slide is a. A site plan that is coded so that it shows you. All of the various structures that were on this property at the time of the fire. At the time of the fire, um there were multiple structures on the property. And what the applicant uh did as part of the application. Is they essentially are removed all of these and are merging these together. So you had. A detached garage, there was a guest house, a shed, a storage room and a pool house. All of these were destroyed in the twenty eighteen fire. The total development square footage of the property at the time. Uh was counted out to be five thousand five hundred and forty-five. If I may have the next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier. Yeah, in September of twenty twenty, the planning department did approve a planning verification. For in-kind rebuild of the single-family residence and the swimming pool. The square footage approved under that application was three thousand eight hundred and seventy-two square feet. A portion of the approved single-family residence under the planning verification. Uh as you see there, uh I would say it's portion A. And then there is a zoom in of it uh below that encroaches. encroaches within the one hundred-foot setback from the stream that runs along the property. That portion of the building was a replacement structure, so it did meet the crit, the exemption criteria contained in the city's local coastal program and that's why that particular area was able to be put back. Uh, the, the addition that is proposed, uh, under this coastal development permit is on the, the other side of that one hundred-foot setback and uh, it would be towards to the south, uh, north would be to, uh, the, the right-hand corner of that. Next slide, please. And Jessica, I believe you are back, so I'll let you pick it up from there.
Great, thank you so much, sorry about that everyone, I lost power momentarily. Um, so the slide that you have here is for the overall site plan for the proposed property. Um, as Richard had mentioned, the proposed project includes a four thousand six hundred and twenty square foot addition to the previously approved residence under the planning verification. Uh, exterior site improvements that include sixteen thousand uh, nine hundred and thirty square feet of total impermeable coverage, um, expanding the swimming pool and spa area, view permeable fencing, um, and gates not to exceed six feet in height, an outdoor seating area for the tennis court, new landscaping and hardscaping and a new OTTS. The proposed additions, um, are to the previously approved residence are designed to utilize the previously existing developed footprint, driveway alignment and remaining, and remaining the site improvements as shown on the project plans. Next slide, please. Pictured here is a colored comparison between the planning verification and coastal development permit approvals. Um, as, as previously mentioned, the outline in blue is what was approved under the planning verification, um, which does encroach into the stream buffer. However, that was where the existing development was cited. The areas outlined in red, um, show the proposed scope of work and new additions that are included under the CDP. And the green, uh, section also shows the new impermeable coverage that's included under the CDP application. Next slide, please. And pictured here is the proposed demolition plan. Um, this, the demolition includes demolition of existing hardscape. Um, some was removed during the debris removal post the Woolsey Fire. However, this project also proposes additional demolition of hardscape, um, a slab near the rear of the tennis court, the demolition of the existing septic tanks, walkways, um, and exist, some of the existing pool shell, um, and drive, and part of the existing driveway. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the first floor plan. Um, the red color shows the proposed addition that will be included under this application. And, excuse me, the green hatched portion shows the portion of the house that was approved under the planning verification. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the second floor plan. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the roof plan. Next slide, please. This slide shows the tennis court plan, which includes, um, the area in green that is the proposed trellis that shall not exceed eighteen feet in height. And the existing tennis court will be resurfaced and then the new outdoor, there will also be a new outdoor seating area as mentioned, that's hatched out there in green. Next slide, please. This slide shows the proposed elevations. Um, the top portion shows the east elevation of the proposed project. And the lower photograph shows the west elevation. Next slide, please. This, this slide shows an exhibit, um, reflecting the two-thirds calculation. And the proposed single-family residence is uh, proposing a total of twenty-four feet in height for the second floor additions. In the above view, the blue color shows a single-family residence up to eighteen feet in height and the pink color shows the bulk of the house more than eighteen feet up in height, up to twenty-four feet in height for a flat roof. The floor area up to eighteen feet in height is five thousand seven hundred and eighty square feet and more than eighteen feet up to twenty-four feet is three thousand seven hundred and fifteen square feet, which is compliant with the two-thirds calculation. Next slide, please. Here, um, shows the proposed sections of the house. Um, the red line of the section shows the, the drawing up to twenty-four feet in height from the lowest grade. This project includes and site plan review number twenty-three zero zero two, included for a flat roof up to twenty-four feet in height. Next slide, please. This slide shows the elevation of the property from Cuthbert Road. When you see the property from the roadside, the house is not visible due to the presence of vegetation that covers the house and provides visual barriers from the road. Also, as you look through the driveway, it shows the road at a higher elevation and the proposed design sloping down. Next slide, please. Pictured here are site photographs of the project site. On January twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, story poles demonstrating the location, height and bulk of the proposed project were placed on-site to aid in visual analysis of the private and public views. On February third, twenty-twenty-three, staff performed a site visit to document, um, the story poles. Pictures one and two show the story poles and the existing palm trees present um, from the tennis court on the site. Pictures three and four show the portion of the house that will be visible from, potentially visible from the driveway. Next slide, please. Picture five shows the fencing photo taken to show the vegetation that will prevent, excuse me, that is present near the blue line stream and the existing fence. Picture six shows the existing partially damaged pool. Photo seven shows the existing tennis court that will be resurfaced and picture eight shows a panoramic view of the story poles. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff recommends the adoption of resolution twenty-three dash ten, approving coastal development permit number twenty-two zero zero seven, site plan review number twenty-three zero zero two and demolition permit number twenty-three zero zero one. And that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant team are available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to us here, disclosures. Uh, Commissioner Hill.
I visited the site, uh, last week with John. Uh, we looked at it from the street and from the, the parcel adjacent, you could walk down and look at pretty much all of this site right, right across, um. I don't know that I learned anything new that's not in the staff report, other than what the view exposures are from neighbors.
Uh, I have the same disclosure, except I did learn that the blue line stream is an extension of a, a stream that goes uphill and has a large culvert underneath the, the, uh, underneath the s- street and there was evidence of a lot of scouring from the recent rains.
Yeah.
Commissioner Peak.
Um, I visited the site, uh, today in the afternoon and I, uh, had a brief conversation with Richard about it, I didn't learn anything new from that conversation that's not in the staff report. Um, from my site visit, I did also witness a little bit of that scouring that's mentioned near the creek and, um, you know, also paid attention to some of the other houses in the neighborhood and this one is on the larger side.
I, I, I should also add, I talked to Richard and, uh, about a couple aspects, specifically the two-thirds rule and thought we'd be having a different exhibit produced for this evening, but I haven't seen that yet.
Okay, um, well, I drove by, I love that street, I drive by often. I've really come to rid of like that street, so, um, that, that's it for me, um. Public comment or the applicant?
Yes, uh, we have Janik Dambrowa, I believe he's in the meeting under JTD Architects, um, representing the applicant team, the owner Michael Ballour is also present in the meeting.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could give me just one moment, I'm going to give you fifteen minutes on your clock.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, uh, thank you Director Malaka and thank you Planner Thompson, uh, the presentation was, was accurate. Uh, I would like to, uh, ask if you can put up the presentation that we sent, yes, thank you. Uh, the site is doubly screened, so I think for Commissioner Dennis's, Dennis Smith's, uh, benefit, uh, we're fortunate because there is a screen of cypresses along the road and, uh, actually quite mature, uh, most of them survived the fire, so it's, that's a whole interesting discussion. And then there's a secondary screen that was planted, you can see in the, in the photo on the right, which is very dense, so when one is looking from the street, looking at the uh, poles and orange ribbons, it's very hard to see if possible at all, maybe just down the driveway, uh, obliquely. The, uh, the parcel to the east, the adjoining parcel where the two commissioners walked down and looked at the, uh, poles, story poles, uh, has the greatest exposure. Uh, I worked or we worked very closely with that property owner and made sure that we were in agreement and not blocked any of his views. He in fact, uh, sent a letter of support saying that he is fine with the project as designed and as demonstrated by the power poles. Could I go to the next slide, please? Uh, so if one looks at our parcel, the building is outlined in yellow. Uh, here you can see the multiple screens. If you look at the cor, the water course, you can see that there's a kind of triangular piece in the uh, northwest corner and then there's a screen that follows the curvature of the water course. Then there's a secondary screen just above the yellow outline and then finally the outline of the building. Uh, the tennis court is existing, uh, there are a very large trees, uh, some have recovered from the fire, some have not. Uh, the existing large trees are along the west property line and the south property line. The property to the south is below us. Uh, the property to the east is a little bit above us, the property beyond that is even higher. The property to the west, to the left is a gully, so it's actually very much down. Uh, the, uh, parcel, I guess it's, uh, twenty-nine, eight hundred is actually, uh, the building is built on an embank on a built-up pad, almost a kind of Acropolisian uh, promontory. Uh, we are fortunately actually following the, uh, the contours and we are fortunately surrounded by trees. Uh, could I go to the next slide, please? Uh, we focused on taking the high edge of the stream bed as the offset. Uh, one of the things that's being removed that has not been discussed is there is an existing septic system and of the two, it's, it's the larger one, uh, that is within seventy-five feet of the water line. Uh, we agreed in our initial meetings, we had several meetings with the biologists that it would be prudent to remove everything that we can and so that's what we did. Uh, please, the next slide, please. Uh, we, uh, removed the buildings that were closest to the stream, you can see these are outlines of the, uh, brush clearance impacts and we tried to reduce the footprint of that impact, can you go on to the next slide, please? Uh, we tried to reduce the amount of paving that's non-permeable. Uh, we did the minimum in the driveway, uh, where the fire department needs the heavier support, the rest of it is permeable. Uh, we took the scattering that was going on on the site and coalesced it, uh, there was a request from one of the, the comments in, in the pub, from the public saying, why couldn't it be a one-story building? I- if you have a building this size, you have to either compress the building together and try not to make a bulky ma- mass or spread the building out horizontally, but that begins to again enc- encroach more on the natural habitat, so we decided to go for the concentrated um, in a solution, and the next slide, please. And here you can see the, in, in yellow, uh, the existing buildings and the reduced footprint. Uh, the pool is shown also in here actually as a kind of small, uh, L right at the edge of the blue line, which is the offset from the from the water course. Uh, we are happy to, first of all, we're following the, the night sky ordinance, but we are happy to provide any additional trees along the property line to the, uh, to the west where the building opens up, uh, the building is focused on the view. Uh, there is a beautiful view, once you are on the, on the second floor and that's one of the other reasons for the second floor, so that the the owners and users have the benefit of that view. Um, the, there has been a rumor and it keeps coming up in various places that because of ramps and because of the elevator, that this is going to be a rehab center, that is absolutely not, not true. Uh, it's never planned that way, it hasn't ever been discussed that way. Uh, the reason there are ramps and the reason there's an elevator is that, uh, one of the sisters that's part of the family that owns this, uh, this is in a trust held by a group of children, the grandfather, the father gave the property to the children and now the grandchildren are also the users. So this is a kind of a familial compound, but one of the ants unfortunately is an MS, a wheel-bound patient and we promised the owners that we would provide access to all parts of the building for her and, uh, the site as well. So that, that's the reason for the ramping. Um, I believe that is all I need to say at this point, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I do believe I misspoke previously, I am looking at the notes on the project, we do also have a speaker, Michael Ballour. Um, and so we'll open a microphone for him and there will be eight minutes and forty-two seconds remaining, or Janik, should he choose to rebut?
I'm just here to observe, uh, but I could give my time if Janik needs more time through the rest of this, uh, hearing.
Oh, I don't believe he does, uh, he had time remaining, thank you. And if there are any other members of the public present in the meeting who wish to speak on this matter, please click the raise hand button at this time. And seeing none.
Okay, back to us, um. Wow, nobody, make a motion.
Go start.
Correct, Commissioner Hill just beat you.
Did I?
Commissioner Hill.
He, he muted himself. Um, all right, just some, some questions, sort of threshold questions for staff. Maybe the, the most, the biggest one outstanding is the two-thirds rule. Um, I don't believe has been applied correctly here in terms of the volume analysis there. Um, basically, and I, I talked to Richard about this and he said something about, well, we, we took an average and we're splitting things above twelve feet and calling that the second story and things below that. That's not what shows up on the diagram, that's not what's in the calculations, which split it at eighteen, everything above or below eighteen feet. The two-thirds rule says you take the entire second floor and count that as the second floor. It has nothing to do with the height of where that floor is. And the eighteen feet only comes into play on the two-thirds rule when you have on the ground floor a vaulted space that extends above eighteen feet. At that point, you call that second story, because it's above the eighteen feet. So, and we do have a vaulted space here, but, so what I, I don't, I don't see an exhibit that in numbers or graphics or anything that accurately portrays the two-thirds rule on this house. Um, and so, do we have an explanation or a new fresh graphic or what, what, what? Do, do I need to call for a continuance so we can get this number pinned down? What, where are we at on that?
Parker, are you able to put up the exhibit that was sent to you by Akash? Or I guess, should I say Rebecca, are we able to have Parker do it? I don't know.
Um, we haven't seen anything, I don't believe you haven't gotten. Oh, give us one minute.
So on the two-thirds rule, if you look at the codes carefully, the MMC and the LCP, they're actually different. The MMC says the portions of the building that are second floor and over eighteen feet vaulted ceiling shall be counted towards the two-thirds rule. The LIP says the portions of the building above eighteen feet shall be counted towards the two-thirds rule, so they are different in what they say because in the MMC, if you have a building that's under eighteen feet tall, but you have a second floor, it still falls under the two-thirds. it still falls under the two-thirds rule. So the applicant in the exhibit provided in the plans technically does meet the requirements of the LIP in that they are displaying the portions of the home that are above eighteen feet. What staff does is we apply both. And so in this case, we've got this or um, this is a revised exhibit. And the reason why there is a break at twelve feet in this exhibit is because the first floor stops, uh, the ceiling stops at twelve feet and the second floor starts above twelve feet. So that's why we have a break there. So in this particular exhibit, you are getting both. Um, you're capturing the second floor. And you're also capturing the portions of vaulted ceilings above eighteen feet. And I and I think another key thing to point out about this exhibit too is that the two-thirds rule is a a visual massing issue. And so yeah, as you can see in this exhibit as well, there is the portion of the building that is uh right at twelve feet, that's and and nothing on top of it. And then this uh wing, if you will, that has the the portion of it that counts towards the two-thirds. So that is the purpose of this. And uh, what you you've got here is they've also provided the two-thirds calculation uh as well to demonstrate that their second floor volume is three thousand seven hundred and fifteen. Hope I'm reading that correctly. Which is less than the thirty eight fifty three that would be allowed.
So you get the same numbers, because those are the same numbers that are on the old exhibit. Where the the distinction between blue and red was drawn at eighteen feet. You end up with the same numbers when you divide it at twelve feet.
Correct, because staff included the second floor regardless of its location heightwise.
Mm-hmm. Okay, uh, next question. When looking at the survey of the original structure. Uh, it's one of the first pages in the packet. It shows um, let's call it page A zero point six. It shows it pretty well. Um, it looks like the original house was maybe around two thousand square feet. Maybe a little bit more than that. And yet the math that we have here has a starting with an original prior to Woolsey of thirty eight seventy two, or no, maybe that's that. I'm sorry, that's counting the the Woolsey plus ten. But um, I'm just confused about the history about what's really, what the baseline is here in what we're allowing because it seemed relatively small. There were, I looked on on base, I should have disclosed this. I looked in on base and saw that there were a series of permits in the eighties that were for various work that was never finalized. Apparently, the work was done, but it was not uh didn't have the final inspection, so it didn't go to the tax assessor. Um, and then in twenty ten, there was a permit to quote verify floor plan in resolution of code enforcement. Which to me suggested, and I don't think we were quite sure exactly what happened, but it sounds like there was a fair bit of bootleg construction, the guest house, the pool house. Um. And that the twenty ten verification permit was to rectify that. And somehow uh uh approve that all after the fact. I'm really not sure what the legitimate baseline is that we we should be counting, but if you're counting, the baseline is thirty eight seventy two, three thousand eight hundred seventy two square feet. Then this addition of forty six four thousand six hundred twenty would be not a ten percent or even a twenty percent increase over the Wool pre-Woolsey, but a hundred and nineteen percent. And if you're counting the house that was appears to have been on site by the survey, two thousand, maybe twenty five hundred square feet, we're talking about an increase of three or maybe even four hundred percent over what was there in the neighborhood. So I I wonder, and 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 by the way, in terms of allowable TDSF, I'll sort of squeeze this into the question. It appears that the exterior stairway for the rooftop deck has not been counted in any TDSF measurement. And since they're spec'd at only eight square feet under their allowable maximum. I think the um if you want to have the rooftop deck there, you're exceeding the TDSF just to be able to get it up to it with that stairway. So the base question is, what what is the history here that we're building on? Uh, with respect to the site plan review and the neighborhood character, it's see, it sure feels like we're we're going over the top here compared to what the neighborhood supported before. Richard?
So a couple of things. We did some digging and we found the information on the twenty ten zoning violation. And the reason for that was that at some point uh there was an issue where a extra bedroom was modified in into a dining room and a kitchen sink. So the reason for that twenty ten permit, that verification was that as a result of a code enforcement case, uh, that was the staff's way to go out and verify that the building had been returned to its pre-approved status. It wasn't a matter of adding square footage. Um, and that was revol- resolved in July seventh of twenty ten. When the city removed its notice of violation from the property. So that that was the issue there. It wasn't a matter of bootlegged square footage. And in terms of the size of this addition, so that is why it's a coastal development permit in front of you guys this evening. Is that had they kept it under fifty percent, then this would have been that uh two-step that was discussed uh at length the past couple of years. Um. The practice uh that was set in place after the fire was that if you come in for a PV and get ten percent. Uh, if you wanted an addition, you could go up to fifty percent. And if you wanted to go beyond the fifty percent, then you processed a coastal development permit. And that would be regardless of whether or not prior to the fire, it would have been exempt. And the reason being there is that we wanted a public process so that the neighbors would be made aware of it and it and it wasn't a surprise to anybody. So there was no cap set uh on what you could uh ask for, provided you did it through a coastal development permit. Now, the cap, I guess, if you will, would be the total development square footage. Uh, this particular project uh based on its lot size uh allows for roughly an eighty five hundred square foot uh uh structure, TDSF. However, uh, the, as commissioners, if you feel that you cannot make the findings and you'd like to see a smaller home on the site and you feel that this is out of character. Uh, that is where the 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 commission has the i- it's um uh discretion here. And you have the ability to simply state that it you can't make the findings, it's out of character. And Pat, I hope I'm not oversimplifying this. Uh, but that that's where you come in as commissioners. So sure, they they they've met the rule here uh in terms of what the code allows for, but as a commission, you can read that as up to and always ask for less. The particular staircase, I I believe we're speaking about the the same one is an uncovered staircase. And and that's why the square footage of it was not included. Had they put a cover on it. Um, then it 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 would be something that we would add add in there.
Uh, okay, with respect to the side plan plan review, one of the neighbors pointed out in a letter, and you tell me this is correct, that one lot away at twenty nine eight hundred, they were held to eighteen foot maximum height in for a similar site plan review kind of basis, or what truth is that? Does that speak to any?
I think that's because that that house is way more viewable and has a much larger view impact than this house does.
So that's up on that sort of little promontory thing, and that's.
Up on a knoll, and I think it also affects obviously the views from the road and the property owners across the street.
Um, I I imagine John might want to speak to this more, but just the question of uh serial development here. If we 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 have one CDP that, you know, is basically still open and hasn't even started construction, and yet they're trying to add, however you counted, at least a hundred and nineteen percent on top of that with a new application. That that feels like piecemealing or something, or I I don't know, maybe maybe John can can put his finger on that better than I just have kind of a hunch about it.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yeah, um, this one bothers me a lot because of that. What we're being presented with is an eighty five hundred square foot house. And Richard never said what the two thousand and ten verification square footage was. But from the plans, it looks a lot smaller than what it stated is. Uh, so the problem is you've got a blue line stream. And so the way I'm seeing this, and you tell me if I'm wrong, Richard. They come in and they say, oh, we're gonna do a hundred and ten percent rebuilt where it was. And though, so we don't have to worry about encroachment on blue line streams or all those rules, because we're we we're rebuilt. Then they come in, I guess, and we don't have any evidence of this, but I guess with a hundred and fifty percent. Um. Increase. Which, by the way, the Coastal Commission cautioned us not to do anymore. Okay, and it's my understanding of all the discussions with the Coastal Commission. Uh, don't do that. We never told you you could. Then, all of a sudden, we come in with this project, which is eighty five hundred square feet. Which is Craig's standard is well over two hundred percent. Total. And we're being excluded. This is not a new house. This is not a new CDP. Even though it states it is. This is, let's exempt the part that that encroaches with the stream. So the planning commission doesn't get to look at it. And call us, I don't know what, a remodel. Well, it's way over fifty percent, so it can't be a remodel. The other thing is, CDPs cannot be serial. We found that out when Juan Trab wanted to build a hotel. He got a hotel. He had all the permits. He came and he wanted a graveyard. And our city attorney said, no, you cannot have two at the same time. You have to give up in writing your prior CDP. That's established, that, you know, you can pull up and watch on TV. So I'm bothered by the fact that somebody took us a reasonably small house and made it a giant house. And cut out a a lot of the problems. Now, I can show you a lot of the problems, but one is insurmountable, as far as I can tell. And that is they are covered by the dark sky ordinance. When they got their original Woolsey fire permit, there now was no roof deck that I can that I can find. There was no party roof directly next door to the stream. There was no, there's no light mitigation needed or required. And now we're being told, well, you got this giant house, you can ignore that. You can't ignore. It's required, okay? And so we can't just take this little blue area down at the bottom of the slide and say, well, you can't look at that because it's too close to the string. In fact, when you look at the landscape plant, they are planting in the middle of the string. Okay, there's a lot of problems with that area. Because it's a blue line stream has required setbacks. We're not even allowed to look at. This house should not be before us. They have a permit. If they want a eighty five hundred square foot house, they start and build an eighty five hundred square foot house. It's not, this is no way near a Woolsey fire rebuild. No way even close. It's two hundred percent at least. And that's limited to a hundred and fifty. So I I'm gonna go through later with a lot of problems with that. Uh, by the way, the stairway, I think you're misinterpreting. When we did the house on sea level, we made them counted. It was not covered, okay? And it was a structure. It has a structure to it. Structures have to be counted. Um, so that's a difference from what we made another property owner do. Um, now, the the problem I see with this and and Planet, it's a big lot, but we have a very big house going in, where a non very big house, one-story house, as I assume, with no site plan review of uh light emission. Because it was a little dinky house that was being re- rebuilt. Now we have a whole project coming to us. Not just the part that's being added. The whole thing is coming to us to approve. This is a new CDP. It's not a Woolsey fire. Could not be a Woolsey fire. So it has to be presented as a CDP following the LIP and the LCP. Now, mentioned earlier with the different rule ways you calculate um, two-thirds rule. And I didn't go follow all the numbers. But the code does say the strictest shall apply. It doesn't say you can pick one.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know if this is two-thirds or not. Um, but there's a lot of things that are missing here. For example, there's no table that says what's being added by square footage. I don't know if the bathroom by the swimming pool is being counted. I can't find it anywhere. That alone takes it over the total maximum TDSF. The stairway takes it over the total maximum TDS. And and the architects, and these are just general ideas, because there's plenty more to go through. I got four pages of the notes. The general idea was, oh, this reduces bulk immense. But if you look at the uh, the elevations, it's all two stories from where you look at it. There's one little section out back where you can't see it. So essentially, you look at the elevations, um the big ones. They're all two-story. And if you look at that yellow, that pink and yellow one down below, the only place it looks like it's not a hundred percent two stories is if you stand in the stream and take a look at it. So that doesn't follow. It may or may not follow the code. But it doesn't follow the spirit of the code. But the real problem here is you can't take a Woolsey fire rebuild, take advantage of all you get by just a review and no planning department, no planning commission approval. And convert it in two steps into a giant house and tell the planning commission, well, really, that was the original planning, uh, that was the original Woolsey permit. No, it can't be. And that's a big problem. Because we you drive through Malibu Park and you see all these two-story houses with no two-thirds rule, with this and with that. And we have no idea what they are because they got approved without us looking at them. But we're looking at them. And there's a lot of other problems, for example, the lights in the tennis court and all these kind of things. Uh, uh, over a six-foot fence in the side yard setback. Many, many, many items, but I, what I really need to not understand before I could vote for this is how did this go? And that's what Craig asked. How did this go from a number we don't know for sure was the original burnout to eighty eighty something, almost nine thousand square feet without us being able to review it? It's just not allowed. And fifty percent remodels are not exempt because it's way more than fifty percent.
Okay, Vice Chair, Vice Chair, uh, Commissioner Pete, go ahead.
Um, I have a, actually a lot of the same concerns that John has, and I just wanted to make a motion to deny this project.
Okay, well, I will second that.
I just, um, if, and once again, before we, I want to make sure it's clear. The resolution, the draft resolution is for one of approvals, so it'd be direct staff to come back with a resolution of denial. Um, it would likely be helpful for a few of the, and once again, I just heard, of course, Vice Chair Mazza, some of the what specific findings cannot be made. Um, and so I would, I would leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'll start off with some of the findings. I think that I can't make the findings in regards to the lighting. I am not comfortable with approving an eighty five hundred square foot house where a certain amount of it goes in beyond the hundred-foot uh, blue line stream setback, um, even though they have an approval for the the Woolsey fire rebuild. Uh, doesn't really make sense to me and that it should all come as one project. And I'm not comfortable with the way that it's been presented. And I think that something that Richard said earlier is very important, that, you know, just for applicants in general, that um you know, just because there's a formula that says you could get up to a certain amount of square footage. there's a formula that says you could get up to a certain amount of square footage. You know, that we very much have the purview to say that that doesn't necessarily fit in to the neighborhood or area or the site for that matter. And I think that that's something that's, uh, very important for the applicant to know in this, uh, situation. While, you know, it is, you know, it's, it's very clear that there's one neighbor that's in favor of the project. There's, you know, a neighborhood that doesn't appear to be in favor of the project from some of the comments that we've received publicly, um, that are all of us have perceived. So that's my, my reason for that. And really, I, the, the stream thing just doesn't, I, I can't even get, get my head around that one. The way that you know, the, the, the project has been uh, pushed forward. And the, the lights and that stuff, I mean, that was gonna come in regardless as a condition of any approval at this point. But, uh, that's that's where I'm at. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, John.
Well, Patrick, uh, we can go through all of them. Uh, you, you just need a number of them, I assume. Uh, I, uh, one of the ones I would add is the landscaping plan clearly, clearly uh, includes growth in the stream setback. Um, the lighting plan for the tennis court is clearly not allowed. The two-thirds rule-
Just, hold on, John. In regards to the lighting, Richard, it's my understanding that any project that's coming forth at this point has to be dark sky compliant. Is that not correct?
That is correct. As I mentioned, that there is no freebie on dark skies. So, uh, Pat, uh, would dark skies be applicable in this situation? Because i- it's an automatic. They have to meet it.
Hmm. Yeah, so if the, if, if, if the project as I guess, I mean, wha- what I'm hearing from the, from the commission is that there is, they, they are not convinced. They, 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 it is unclear to them that the proposed lighting plan for the tennis court will comply with, 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 with dark skies. I understand as a-
No, no, I, I, I'm just, I'm just saying that I want to be clear that it is a condition of any project. While we're, we're showing photos that don't necessarily show those being removed. Actually, I think there's even one drawing that shows light, you know, lights in there for the tennis court, and those are specifically prohibited under the dark sky ordinance. So I just want to be, I mean, I guess if anybody knows that, it should be me.
Uh, Patrick, we need to include it because it's in the approval process. They are asking for retrofit of the lighting. And, uh, it's not allowed. It's right in seventeen point forty-one point one hundred. Uh, and then for very first sentence in the, uh, lighting, in the, uh, dark skies ordinance. Um, now there's a lot of, and I don't know how you say this in a, in a, in a resolution, but there's a lot of unanswered questions. We don't know about the exact square footage uh, spelled out. We just know a raw number. We don't know the exact square footage it started with. We know a guess as far as I can tell, because it's not established. A lot of things like that. And I don't know-
That's, that's the biggest problem if we're looking at this as a new project, because I think that it's important for us to say that we should be looking this, that this is a new project. And I think that that should be the, the clear stance that the, the, the planning department's taking. You know, how we've gone from, uh, even how we would go from three thousand to eight thousand seems out of control, or even if it was four thousand to eight thousand. But I, I just think that that's something that's
And, and, and-
Any applicants and anybody out there should very much know, you know, that you're gonna be coming through the CDP process for that.
And I think it should be clear. I assume this will go to the city council. I think it should be clear that we, at one time, and I think people deny it now, we had a demonstrably proven nonserial development policy. And we have forced people to give up their CDPs because of that. And so this is a special privilege to consider this a, a add-on CDP. Um, special privilege. From a Woolsey permit to an add-on CDP. Uh, we either look at the whole project or we don't.
I, I, I would be careful there. The, the, the Coastal Commission's concern was that they did not want the city applying LIP thirteen point four point one, which is an exemption from a CDP for an addition. They wanted additions to be processed through the CDP process, uh, which is happening here. So this is actually being processed consistent with the guidance uh, provided by the Coastal Commission. They did not want a PV and APR. They, they were worried that that APR failed to analyze the requirements that would, uh, uh, of the local coastal program. So here you have somebody following that guidance, getting a CDP and, um, being required to, to, to demonstrate compliance with the various sections of the LIP. Uh, so I think that, that the biggest concern here is, as Commissioner Pete, uh, mentioned is, uh, what I'm hearing from you guys is that the scale of this is, is beyond what you believe is, is fitting of that neighborhood. Uh, you're unable to make the findings given the size of this home.
Well, Richard, I, I want to disagree in one sense. We have not been given the opportunity to evaluate this full CDP. You carved out a hunk of it and said, no, no, we already proved that. And you made it serial development. And so this is not a CDP on this house. It's a CDP on a portion of this house. Okay? And the Coastal Commission wants us to follow the rules. And their rules are a hundred and ten percent. We'll look the other way on a hundred and fifty for a while. And when you do a site plan review and you, you look at environmental laws and all the other things that are in the Coastal Commission, including light seepage and trespass and all that stuff, and we're not being allowed to do it. So this is not a full CDP. And that's-
I, right, but I, I, I just want to read that the findings for this, well, from at least, should the motion when voted on, if, if approved, are, are gonna be limited to this project. A- 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 as a function of this motion, should it be approved? There is no, you know, there, there can't be any change and or direction to staff in the future. It must be done this way or that way. I understand the concerns. I understand the issues. I understand there may be some disagreement currently in the meeting. However, that is not, we, we are not adjudicating that right now. We are looking at this project. I understand-
But John, we can't. Okay, let's focus on this project.
I totally understand that. I'm- Correct. And so I just want to be sure that, that everyone's clear that this motion is geared towards this project, this specific-
If I came in on a project, staff said, well, this is sort of near the beach. We'll use beachfront rules. Okay? That's against the LIP. That's against the coastal-
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a minute here, Vice Chair. Everybody's had a motion. Everybody's had their time.
No, they haven't. You need a two-thirds vote to shut me up. Period.
I'm just taking, I'm taking my turn to speak. You've got to speak. I'm gonna take my turn.
And I close the discussion.
And likewise, Commissioner Smith, I asked a few staff questions, but I have not given my, my thoughts about things more broadly yet. So go ahead, though.
So Director Malika, is this not a full CDP?
Yes, this is a coastal development permit you have before you. Uh, it was noticed to the Coastal Commission. They're privy to it. So yes, this is a, a CDP for an addition to a fire rebuild.
So these folks followed all those rules, right? They went to coastal, coastal said, yeah. So they've decided to build a bigger home, like many people have after the fire. Uh, whether it was a CDP or not, but these folks have had to go through the whole CDP. So if they've ended up with eighty-four hundred and ninety-five square feet and they're under the TDSF and those things were all measured and all these eyes have been on it. And given the neighborhood of what this is, as I said, driving down that street, because it's become one of my favorite streets, there is a lot of this. People are not gonna go back and build two thousand and three thousand square foot houses. Not gonna happen. They're building bigger homes because for the first time, maybe if they are lucky enough, and they still are the original owner, they can build a bigger home now. So they're doing it. Um, and these are all big lots. Some of them are two, three, and four acres. It's just phenomenal in that area. So with, with what's going up over there, and a lot of them are, it's still a beautiful street with all this new development that's, that's happening on it. I, uh, it's a full CDP. These guys followed the rules. So they're allowed to be where they are, the way I'm looking at it. And, um, they should be able to continue it, to build their home.
And Chair, if you're looking for-
Go ahead.
Sorry, Chair. If you're looking for another example of this, uh, three zero one eight, one eight one Harvester was a PV plus CDP. And I believe also another on Harvester, uh, twenty-nine eight forty-six. So there have been a handful of folks that have processed applications this way where they got the PV and then came to this commission or the previous planning commission, I should say. And we got a new one this year, uh, for that over fifty percent addition.
Ri- Ri- Richard, can I ask you a question about any of those? Because I might have not been here for those that have been referenced. Um, did any of those encroach into a, um, the setback of a blue line stream the way that this project is?
You can give me a moment. Let's see.
Like, and also like kind of on this kind of scale, I guess, would also be the question.
I would also mention that we do have our city biologist at present in the meeting who can respond to any biology questions.
Yeah, I just want to mention that we aren't asked any biology questions.
Well, Asha.
Wh- wh- while, while Richard is looking, if, if it's your pleasure, Skylar, I could go with my talk. If, I don't know if he needs more than a minute.
Um, one of the two did not have any, it was uh, E- 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 Esha considerations. It was a size thing. Uh, let me look at the other one. And
While we're waiting for that, Commissioner Pete, are you open to a continuance on this? As opposed to a complete denial?
I think what my, so what my biggest, um, the hardest thing for me to look at this project is one, I don't feel that it fits. It's on the, so it's on the large scale, the larger size of the neighborhood, right? It's a large lot. You can fit a big house there, right? There, there's no question in regards to that. The mass of the house to me, although you don't see it everywhere from the street, you will see it if you look across the driveway of the neighboring property, not when you're looking directly on. But when you go, I guess that would be to the east. And I know that that neighbor hasn't, you know, has clearly said he has no issue with this. Um, it just, it feels large. It feels like there's, um, and it is large. Um, and I'm really uncomfortable with that large sort of portion going close to the stream that wouldn't normally be allowed. And then sort of the how that's happened and, and I guess in the timeline, right? So and it's, it's probably even more frustrating for the owner because it codes or the, the rules are sort of set up to make you do that if you want to make that happen, right? I mean, you could look at it and say like, you know, just, it doesn't feel like sort of a, um, it's more complicated than some of the others. Because I really want to support this project, but I just can't do it with that carve out into the, into the stream and the, the size.
So if, if we give them a continuance and allows them to either work on this and come back as opposed to a complete denial?
If they, if, I would give them a continuance if they were gonna come back with something that's not cutting into that stream portion and, you know, is gonna be a little bit smaller. I have no problem with that.
You're talking about, I, I haven't even had my, spoken my piece yet here, and you're talking about how to resolve, like, what the vote is gonna be.
Well, because you guys are just, you, you're gonna just keep talking about stuff you all three agree on, but I'm trying to, I'm just thinking maybe that these folks may have an opportunity to continue.
Well, I did that. The last time we gave a continuance was the last, was heard at the last meeting we had, and they came back with exactly the same house. Okay?
We need to fill in the record regardless.
Along on the ca- the city council can do this. Now, I, I just want to make one last point. If we're not, as a planning commission, allowed to look at the impacts on Esha, this is not a full CDP. I don't care what anybody says. If, if this planning staff says, you can't look at that, we already approved it, it's not a full CDP. Period. End of story. We are, we are here to follow the rules. And the rules say you can't flood a stream with light. And we're putting up uh, uh, they're asking for a roof deck right next to the stream. Never considered in the first hearing. This is not a full CDP because we are precluded from looking at a full CDP. And I don't care what anybody says. If you tell me I can't look at something, then I'm not reviewing.
Okay, what is it you're not looking at, Vice Chair Mazza? You, I don't understand what you're trying to say there.
Anything on yeah, on that blue line, we're not allowed to touch.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I need to have a, ask for a five-minute recess, and then I'm gonna disconnect from the meeting and I'm gonna call you back.
And we continue deliberating, or do we need to wait?
No, we gotta wait. It's his motion.
I have no problem if you guys continue deliberating.
No, no, no. So Commissioner Pete, when you say you're gonna call the, the meeting back on just a different device is what I'm hearing.
Correct. Correct. I have, I have to go to the airport, so I have to leave right now. So I'm gonna be calling you back from the car with my documents in hand.
We have a ten-minute recess.
Okay. All right, you can make it five. I just gotta get out to PCH, otherwise it'll be on and off.
That is ten minutes enough.
Okay, that's good.
So I, so I, I have nine thirty-two, so we'll recess to nine forty-two PM local.
You don't.
Yeah, under no circumstance do we want to give them a continuance.
Commissioner Mazza, your microphone is not muted.
Okay, thanks.
Chair Smith, I am back in the meeting with, uh, without my video on whenever uh the rest of the commissioners are available.
Great, thank you.
We have Skylar yet?
Not, he's not uh back into the meeting just yet.
Taking our second break, my dog is like, come on, you took your break before. It's time to play. This meeting's supposed to be over now.
He can play with the coyotes.
Yeah.
I feel like you can multitask and throw a toy from your chair.
The toy is very loud.
And. That's what the mute button is for.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm in my studio control room and the the animals don't come in here, so she's sitting.
That's probably wise.
Yeah.
I know that 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 Commissioner Peak said he was going to call in. I assume that's the last we have heard from him. No one has texted him. We haven't seen an attempt by anyone to to call in.
I have not seen an attempt. I did also provide Alex with the phone numbers for the individual commissioners prior to the meeting in case it's needed.
He's called in from Abu Dhabi, so he knows how to do it.
Yes, he has called in from various places over the years, that's for sure.
I'm gonna call him, see what happens. Will do. Okay, okay. Rebecca, he needs you to reset him the link on his phone.
Hmm.
He can't find it.
Alex, are you able to do that? Easily?
Excellent.
Yeah, give me a minute.
Thank you.
The man of magic.
I mean, I can do it eventually. I don't actually have a work cell.
Thank you, Alex.
The man of pressure.
So when you guys mentioned the wind, you got me looking at the weather forecast. I had no idea so much rain was heading towards us.
Oh, it's gonna be gnarly.
Yeah.
It's gonna make for an interesting.
Thumbs up.
It's the snow. It's the snow that's gonna make it gnarly.
I ain't go up to Keenan and see snow Thursday night.
Oh, boy.
We do have, we, we do have breeze here now. We didn't at the last break, and now it's reached over here.
Cut the snow on Keenan again. I don't, God, the last time that happened was like oh seven or oh eight.
Yeah. I, there was a movie tone news that used to be run on the Z channel out here. Two inches of snow on Topanga Beach on. January first nineteen forty-six. Right in with a surf lapping up against it. Uh. Do you want Scott's number or uh? Do you have it?
I provided that to Alex prior to the meeting.
Well, I got him on the one that ends with eight one.
I do as well. He said, yeah, he said, oh.
Should we make a motion to just decide we have a quorum now and proceed? What's the?
I mean, it's.
Yeah, so so once again, so Chair, that 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 is an option. Um, unfortunately, if if Commissioner Peak were to then join on, depending on how far the deliberations have gone. We could attempt to update him in real time, i.e. attempt to summarize what has been said or have someone just repeat it. Um. That is kind of up to up to your discretion, and then, of course, before we start deliberations, there is something I do have to address, but that will be, that will come after, after you make your decision, Chair Smith.
Well, I I. It's obvious that that Commissioner Hill still has some things he wants to talk about, although I. Just figured if we continued it and we'd save everybody a lot of time, but he has that right, of course, and uh. Uh, Commissioner Hill, I I guess for the moment, let's let's keep this going because it is nine forty-eight.
Sure, got it. But but so Commissioner, but before you jump, we do have to note that there was a. Uh, a kind of a hot mic incident, a microphone that was left on during the break period. Um, at which point a uh commissioner did express some. Opposition to continuing it. So just for the sake of the record. Vice Chair Mazza, that is, that is what what I heard, and so I just wanted to to make sure that everyone was aware of that, and that way that there is no confusion. Once again, it is on the topic we are discussing, i.e. the potential issue of a of a continuance.
At all. I am opposed to a continuing.
Got it. And so look at that. We seem, I see Commissioner Peak.
There he is.
Oh, yeah, there he is.
It's, okay, it shows that he is now connected but muted.
Can we have some pictures there?
Yep.
Um, if you're on your cellphone, you would press a star six to unmute.
Andy info.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can hear me or no?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, sorry, I I never use Zoom on this phone before, so. I had to set it up.
So we, so Commissioner Peak, we have not moved forward yet. Um. There uh. Uh evidently, uh Vice Chair Mazza uh expressed during the break that um he's against a continuance. And has repeated that just moments ago. So um at this point, I gave Commissioner Hill permission to continue with his. His thoughts on this, so I'm gonna, I'm going to do that right now. So Commissioner Hill, go ahead.
Okay, so most broadly, we should be helping the Woolsey victims rebuild their rustic neighborhood, not promoting neighborhood size inflation. We got a lot of letters from different neighbors. Um, uh, one neighbor pointed out how this replacement isn't. This mansion, in their words, is not just a replacement, but would be flooding the neighborhood with lots of ancillary people and vehicles. Um. Uh, we got from another neighborhood from Ms. Freeze, who's a reliable witness in my experience. She gave us some numbers of the six. Closest neighbors, which, you know, is not dispositive, but is a rough cut. They averaged four thousand four hundred and eighty. So I think that that that's kind of a clue as to where the neighborhood character lays here. We didn't get any um view PVDs coming in on this, but that could well be because of the moratorium in the neighborhood on PVDs, so. I don't think we should consider that dispositive either. On the roof deck, it's, to me, it's a couple layers of of issues. One. Is this. What I've come ba- come back to multiple times, that we have the privacy rights enshrined in the LCP. Multiple times. Uh, especially in the general plan. And so wherever there are going to be any issues of noise in particular, I mean, usually lighting you can mitigate to a reasonable extent. But noise issues could be significant, and this neighborhood has already demonstrated that they do not want roof decks. We had an item at uh twenty-nine eight four six Harvester, a few lots away. Um, that we denied the roof deck on that, the the, and the applicant was okay with that. They said, okay, fine. We'll give that up, but that's, that in in effect sets a neighborhood standard here that this is one neighborhood that doesn't want roof decks. And then more specifically, in this case, I find it problematic that we would be putting that in the hundred-foot buffer setback. Uh, where. There's no way you can mitigate all the light impacts, just the way atmosphere works and light works, and certainly can't mitigate the noise impacts there, so. The, I I find the roof deck doubly problematic in this case. Um, and then on the tennis court, finally, we saw some permits that were electrical permits, but not planning permits, so I don't know the legitimacy of the whole. Lighting scheme there in the first place, but regardless. This is enough of a new product, a new, a new project. That we should be conditioning it to have no lighting, that that's, that's the dark sky um. Standard, and and it's not a question of what kind of fixture, it just should not have a nighttime lighting on that tennis court. So those, those are a few things. I I agree with much of what's been said by John and um Skylar, and I just wanted to sort of flesh it out with a little bit more. Detail that might be helpful for the applicant moving forward. Thanks.
I'm guessing, but yes, Vice Chair Mazza.
Yeah, unless there's noticed more discussion by. The commission, I move the question.
Commissioner Peak?
Um, you can hear me, yeah?
Yes.
Um. No, I have no more, I have no more comment. I mean. You know. I don't know, I mean. John or Craig, is there any way you guys would go with a continuance? You know, or is that just a negative based on the fact that every time that's happened? You get the same project back in front of you? It's partly that and partly they're, they're just so over the top here. It's not just a a matter of, you know, shifting it a little bit about the margin. I think it needs a whole reconception. All right. I guess we'll. I'll defer to you, Chair.
Well. I guess we're we're there. So Rebecca, roll call, please.
Commissioner Peak, um.
I'm sorry, are we, are we voting for the, we're voting for a denial, so a yes is a denial, correct? Yes. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, well. Go ahead, Director Malika.
I think, is it? Pat, I think you and I are about to say the same thing. Uh, Pat, were you gonna ask about what specific findings?
Correct. I mean, I, I have, I I have taken down a. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Eleven different, you know, once again. Possible findings um listed here, and I just want to be clear that 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 the motion to be made is a. Direct staff to bring back a resolution of the di- denial at the next meeting. Um, did you want to go through the notes that you had, Director Malika? Did you want me to do that? Um.
Question, can we review your motion? We have to, it has to come back.
Yep, yep, you know, yep. Yep.
Why don't? Why don't we just do it based on the notes that you guys have? You'll put those in the staff report. And we'll a- address those at that time, because there's a lot of them. Yeah.
Pat, would it be good for you to read your list? Do you think?
Um. Sure, it's it's a bit, you know, s- some of the. Um, sure, it's, it's a bit, you know, some of the, I guess, I guess my, my concern is that.
For the bullet points.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so one, of course, that the scale en masseing is, is, is beyond the neighborhood character. Um, landscaping plan, uh, has plant, growth and planting in a stream, stream bed setback. Um, there's confusion about the exact square footage that the property started with and what is being proposed. There, there is not a consensus or at least an agreement that the lighting plan for the tennis courts meets compliance with the dark skies. Um, adversely impacts neighborhood character. Um, and then there was some overall discontentment with the way that the application, the application was, was brought to the, to the planning commission.
Also, the two-thirds rule, the two-thirds rule, uh, I think John said it already, but you apply the most restrict, restrictive definition, which is not what was done here.
Okay, two-thirds rule, most strict.
And then also the, uh, the, in, the, the setback, the, uh, blue streams, the blue line stream setback development.
Got it.
And that, I, I, I just want to be clear. Oh, yeah, that's good. That's it.
Before we, I just want to let you know that my emergency warning system just went up, saying windstorm.
Pat, are you good on how we're gonna do the two-thirds comment? Because the, the applicant did apply. We've done, followed our practice of following the code, which means applying both, not picking and choosing one, but applying both.
Flesh out, so that, that in terms of, I mean, both would have to be met, correct?
Correct, and that's, that was in the report. Um, I agree with the.
I, I guess what the, the question is, 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 so it's sort of the two-thirds, but it's also just the clarification in regards to the spur footage, the stairwell, um, and all that stuff, and, and just making sure that, you know, like, that's, that's why we're not approving it, is because we don't, we're not straight on it.
So I think, Pat, I think if you put the tooth, if you think if you add the stairwell to the two-thirds, I think then you're gonna be over the top.
Got it. Okay. All right.
Did, I didn't hear anything in the read back about the roof deck either, that it's in the hundred-foot buffer or that it violates the overall, uh, neighborhood privacy.
Okay.
Standard, quote unquote, neighborhood privacy.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not, not comfortable with that, because I think that there's probably some roof decks that do exist there. Uh, but I am comfortable with it saying specifically in regards to it being in the setback.
Yeah.
Right, and I want to, I want to point out that we are not allowed to even think about it anyway, which is one of my objections. It's excluded from our review.
Got it.
So Pat, perhaps the, the roof decks proximity to Esha, uh, to the stream, uh, could have potential impacts on the, uh, God, I can't get the right word here, I'm sorry, but have impacts basically on the quality of the Esha?
Right, period.
Yeah, and violation of seventeen forty-one, one hundred, which says point oh one, a point one lumens, which is like lighting a match in the Gobi Desert.
All right, okay, yep. And once again, this, this will, this will undoubtedly, this, this resolution will come back to the, to the, to the commission.
Okay, can we move the question then? We have a motion?
Chair Smith? Would you like me to call the roll? Oh no, I'm asking if you would like me to call the roll.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. And then also, Pat, if you wouldn't mind sending me what you have as the motion, I would appreciate that. Um, Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
No.
Motion carries.
I move with you, John.
Roll call, please.
May I have a second, please?
Oh yeah, second.
I'll second.
Okay.